William Fitzgerald, father of Colleen Fitzgerald Biello, Thompson Middle School teacher. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And the next order that brings us to our student council update. And I believe I've seen Maggie Cohen in there somewhere tonight, so it's all yours, Maggie, take it away.
Hi, I'm Maggie, I'm the president of the student council. And I am here to just give you a little update of what's happening at Rogers. So NAC Tech is holding an information night tomorrow night from six to seven thirty. There's a registration link in the Rogers announcements with more information. The Rogers PTO is holding a meeting also tomorrow at six PM. The Zoom information is in the announcements as well. There's a virtual fast food day also tomorrow from eight AM to five PM through appointment. Registration is once again in the Rogers announcement. And you can make appointments with the college advisor or someone from the RISLA. The Survey Works is open through the thirty first, so make sure everyone fills that out. There's new rapid testing at the Park Home Senior Center from Monday through Friday from nine AM to five PM. No appointment necessary. Virtual tutoring is still available through the Newport Community School every day. The class of two thousand and twenty-three is fundraising on February tenth tomorrow from four to seven PM with a mono pizza. And it will be on the corner of Bellevue and East Bowery near a Stop and Shop if anyone would like to go support. We have a couple senior projects that have been in the announcements lately that I wanted to point out. Abigail Kane is collecting cats and dogs, like cat stuffed cats and dogs for the John Clark Retirement Center for Alzheimer's patients. You can email her at abigailkane21@psri with questions or her pickup. Liam Edward will be raffling a Yeti cooler and raising money for Kerrigan, who is battling cancer currently. It's ten dollars per ticket or fifty dollars for six tickets. You can also email Liam at liamedward21@psri.net for more information. Anna Murphy is hosting a beach cleanup contest between the eighth and the thirteenth for a fifty dollar gift card to a restaurant of choice. You send a picture of how much trash you collected and email it to annamurphy21@psri.net for you to enter. And our final one, Emma Leach, will be doing a canned food drive through the twelfth for the Martin Luther King Center. Pickup can be arranged by texting Emma and the phone number is four oh one, four five zero, five six nine eight, or you can email her at emmaleach21@psri.net. February twelfth is a Black History Month Assembly showing, more information on that is in the Rogers announcements every day. And we have a sports update, which is always fun. So Swim had their first virtual pool night. I'm not really sure how that worked, but it was against Classical and Westerly, I believe it was last night. The boys' track reached eleven personal records at their last meet, which is very impressive. The boys' basketball lost to Cherahoe in their first game, but they won against Tiverton and Coventry since. Girls' basketball won against Middletown High School and Cherahoe. RMR won over Providence Country Day, St. Raphael and Wheeler. And gymnastics, lost to Mount Hope, won to East Providence and lost to Barrington and Middletown, as well as Mount Hope and Barrington again. But they have their senior showcase on the thirteenth and the fourteenth will be their last meet against East Providence, Middletown High School and Portsmouth High School.
Alrighty, thank you Maggie for that update. As always, a lot of good information. Is there any questions for Maggie for members of the school committee? Alright, great job Maggie, thanks, thank you for that. That leads us to the next portion of the meeting is recognition and certificates of achievement. This evening, we are recognizing Delilah Escobar Lorenzana, a seventh grade student at Thompson Middle School who was selected as one of the two statewide winners of the Rhode Island State Martin Luther King Junior Holiday Commission Essay Contest. So we are offering congratulations to Delilah for her essay submission to honor the Reverend Dr. King this year. It was a fantastic essay. And just goes to show the great work that's being done at Thompson and by our students. And it's a great honor for her to be selected. I am not sure, is there somebody, I know we have Ivana Humphreys to translate for Delilah.
I'm here.
Mr. Gomes, we have Mr. Browner here as well.
Alrighty, go right ahead, Mr. Browner.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes, and to the members, thank you, Mrs. Nash, and to the members of the school committee, certainly to the leadership at Thompson, Dr. Bean and to Mr. Vakarat. And I am extremely delighted to be among Delilah's teachers this year at Thompson or Delila. She likes, that's how she pronounces her name, Delila. I don't want to mess that up because I've been messing it up since the first day of school in September. But just the same, Delila is among the students in Seventy-one this year. And I am a commissioner for the Rhode Island State Martin Luther King Holiday Commission and have been since two thousand and sixteen. And we were, I was delighted when my fellow commissioners made me aware that other students that submitted essays across the state of Rhode Island, particularly middle school students, there was a middle school contest and there was also a high school contest. And I was delighted to learn that Delila was the middle school student chosen for her writing in this year's middle school prompt. And Delila has been, well, let me just back up for a second and say that this was, this was voluntary or this was extra credit. I did not require Seventy-one students to write this essay. It was something that I offered extra credit because I wanted the kids not to be forced into writing about Dr. King and his legacy. But I wanted them to have a specific desire to choose to do so. And Delila chose to write an essay and I was very proud and am very proud that she was chosen to be the winner from all of the entries for middle school students across the state. And so Delila wrote candidly about her opinions, as well as she highlighted many things that many of us already know about COVID, but she really spoke with great conviction about how Dr. King would have felt about some of the adversities that have been encountered by people of color in this country, particularly marginalized groups, not just because of COVID, but some of the other racial strike that we've experienced. And I'm very proud of her entry as well as her, her ability to just say, I'm gonna do this. Even though it's not required, I'm gonna take a chance and I'm gonna submit an essay. And Delila was very, she was very excited to submit a thank you, not a thank you speech, but an acceptance speech that I coached her. Left Thompson, went over to the King Center where she was, across the street in Newport. And I coached her and she worked with some of the, some of the AmeriCorps workers at the King Center. And they helped her organize a nice acceptance video to forward to the state to allow them to see her accepting her recognition for this state contest. So many thanks to you, Mr. Gomes and the superintendent, Dr. Jermaine, and the members of the Newport School Committee for taking the time to recognize the efforts of one of my students, Delila Escobar Lorenzana from Seventy-one. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, would you like me to translate for the family who I think is dialed in?
Sure, I did see him a minute ago. They adjusted their camera. I couldn't see him at first, but I think they've now adjusted their camera. So yeah, if you'd like to translate that, right ahead.
Bueno, Dalila, Wilma y Luis, no sé si están ahí. Hola, ¿cómo están?
Hola, bien gracias. ¿Qué tal?
Muy bien, muchas gracias por estar aquí. No sé si escuchaste todo esto, pero te lo voy a traducir.
Okay.
Okay, muy bien. Bueno, todos están reconociendo el logro de Dalila porque ella fue este... Bueno, su maestro estaba diciendo que está muy orgullosa de ella, de ser su maestro, porque escogieron al ensayo de Dalila que entre todos los estudiantes de las escuelas intermedias del estado. Escogieron a su ensayo entonces, es un gran honor y está muy orgullosa de ella. Y hasta fue crédito extra, o sea, no fue algo que tenía que hacer y lo hizo y ganó. Y sí, solo quieren reconocer a ella y darle las felicidades, eh, porque es algo muy, muy bueno.
Okay, muchas gracias, muchísimas gracias.
Sí, de nada. Sí. Hola, felicidades en parte de todos.
Muchas gracias.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
So thank you, Ivana. Delila, I want to apologize for messing up your name. At least Mr. Brown has been doing it all year and I only did it once, so. I apologize, we're very proud of you and we're very honored for your work. And you've obviously very dedicated to your work. And as Mr. Browner pointed out, it was an extracurricular activity that you took advantage of and did very well on. So we're very proud of you and I just want to say congratulations and thank you. And I'll let other members of the school committee, if they have any comments they'd like to add, please do.
Just want to send my very best and congratulate you on great work as well.
Thank you.
I agree to do some extra credit, really, I hope that you continue this hard work throughout your schooling and continue to teach people.
Thank you.
Great job, you make Newport look great.
Congratulations and keep up the good work and you're an inspiration to all of the other students too. Thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much and congratulations again. So thank you for being here, thank you Ivana, and thank you, Mr. Browner, to take the time and be with us. And Ivana for your help as well, so thank you all.
First, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you again, Delila, and best of luck and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next, that brings us into the next portion of the meeting this evening, our presentations. We have two presentations from Rogers High School. The first one is on the Rogers High School Student Diversity and Relevance Committee. I believe Mr. Vance is going to give us an update or some information on the work that they've been doing, so.
Yeah, so what I want to, I want to start by saying is that we understand that, like the school committee meetings, there is some time constraints. And when we did this presentation for our faculty, it was easily an hour and then, and then some conversation afterwards. So what, what you guys are gonna hear tonight is gonna be more of a shortened version. And what we're hoping is that there is, maybe at some point, there's a workshop that we could do so we could really sit down and talk about the work and be able to get into questions and answers a little deeper than what this venue might allow us to do. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna end up sharing my screen, but I also want to start by saying as, as adults, as you know, administrators, teachers, school committees, school community, we need to really listen to what our students have to say, particularly around these topics. They're gonna, they're gonna tell their truths, what they feel and what they've experienced. And, and some of it is not pleasant, but as the adults, as, as the people that are overseeing their education, we need to soak that, we need to have some thick skin and kind of soak that in and listen to what they're saying so that we can make change to make sure that all of our students have the same positive experience as they go through Rogers and through the Newport Public Schools. Alright, so I'm gonna share my screen. Actually Kathy, are you able to put the presentation up because mine is not allowing me to do it on my Mac?
Sure, just give me one moment.
My apologies, I knew computer, I didn't have my settings set up right, the, the present on the Zoom. Does it get bigger? Are we gonna, we're just gonna run it this way? It's fine. So the Diversity and Relevance Committee, this is something that we have been talking about for a while now. We've had some, we've had some outside organizations in that have done some school-based evaluations. We've heard, you know, some, some stories and situations that, you know, maybe, you know, kids didn't feel like they had the same access. And so when we're talking about diversity and relevance, we're talking about the range of students in, in the high school that come from all different backgrounds, areas of the globe, things along those lines. And then when we talk about relevance, we're talking about how does the curriculum speak to that diverse school population? Do they see themselves in the curriculum? Do they identify with authors? Do they see their family, their history, their understanding relevant in the classroom instruction? If you want to slide down Kathy. So I thought this was an interesting demographic breakdown as of January first. It really shows the, the demographics in Rogers and in the Newport Public Schools. And so people that aren't actually living inside of our buildings don't necessarily see that. They see things like Bellevue Mansion, the Cliff Walk, but they don't see truly how diverse our population is. So it's just, it's just really goes to the point of we're very diverse. We have a quite a range of students in our building and in our school district. If you want to slide down one more. Delicia, do you want to take this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hi, everyone, um, my name is Delicia Allen and I'm a sophomore at Rogers High School. And during my time at Rogers, my BIPOC peers and I have definitely been stereotyped a lot, sometimes by our teachers, other times by our peers. And all those experiences kind of led me to the conclusion that there definitely needed to be a change in our school community. And so I had several conversations with Principal Benz and we came up with the idea of the Diversity and Relevance Committee. And so this committee is just a way for BIPOC students to share their experiences and work together along with student and staff allies to make sure that our school serves everyone and is the best possible learning environment. And I really hope that with this committee, we can bring a change not only to Rogers High School, but Newport Public Schools as a whole.
Do you want to slide down two slides?
So, um, having migrated to the...
Go up one, sorry.
Okay, um, having migrated to the US when I was only eight years old, I didn't necessarily have a easy experience. Like a majority of my classmates, I attended Pell Elementary School, where I mostly remember my experience as like uncomfortable based on how hard it was for me to adjust to certain things. And then it was Thompson Middle School where I was first introduced to microaggressions. And for those who don't really know what microaggressions is, it's a comment or an action that negatively targets a marginalized group of people. It can sometimes be accidental or sometimes intentional. And, um, in this case, BIPOC students are the ones being affected. And some microaggressions that I've witnessed ranges from the surprise on a teacher's face when a student of color walks into an honors class or even calling out a student in class based on their background. And I've also seen students of color receive harsher punishments for the same things that I've seen my white peers do. And it was usually passed off as just messing around. So, like I said before, all of those things led me, led me, Principal Benz and all the other members of this committee here today because we recognize that change is necessary. And I hope that, um, you all can see that too.
Thank you, Delicia. Do you want to, Kathy, can you move down one? So because of the, the things that we're talking about and the work that needs to happen, we had a Spring Point visit last spring where they identified this was an area of need in our building. And so with that, it is one of our school improvement team goals, right? So Rogers High School will continue to cultivate a culturally responsive and aware community that celebrates and supports the diversity of the student body. Students will be provided with opportunities to share their experience and voice concerns through groups such as the DRC, Student Council, et cetera, to work with faculty to address issues and create ways to celebrate and honor various cultures. Additionally, faculty and staff will participate in professional development to enhance their knowledge and understanding of the following, but not limited to supports of multi-language learners, cultural competency, bias, social emotional learning, and to promote an inclusive education. Can you slide down?
Mr. Grant, I'm not sure Tiana is here, but...
I was hoping that you'd speak on our slide.
Okay, perfect. So, my name is Talia Scott. I decided to join the DRC because mainly for the representation in our education, not only in Rogers, but I feel as, I feel that it's a United States issue educationally because the only times I feel represented is when we're talking about Martin Luther King or Rosa Parks and, or in February, Black History Month. And I feel it could be more inclusive because as we've shown in the slide two, that we have a big population of multiple students that come from different backgrounds. So it would be great to be included and feel that we can relate to what we're learning. And, yeah, that's really the reason why I joined. I'm excited.
Thank you. Yep, want to slide down? Maggie? Is Maggie Cohen still on?
Hi, sorry, um, so I'm, I'm the president of the student council, like I said, and Mr. Vance invited me to this committee. And I think, at first I thought, oh, I'm a white girl at Rogers, I won't have much to contribute to the conversation. And I decided to join because it's important that as the representative for all the students, I have to hear every student's voice. So I'm so glad I joined and this is the student council statement in front of you, so.
Thank you, Maggie.
Um, hi, my name is Macklinani and I decided to join this committee because I've always had some of a diverse life, like where I grew up, my family, my friends. And I've like realized that I've had many different experiences, like as my friends going to school. And there are many incidents that I have witnessed. And I think one of the biggest like things that I've ever seen happen in a classroom was when my teacher referred to student as a mutt. She claimed black people don't go to college and she over-exaggerated the dangers of Jamaica during Spirit Week when people were celebrating their different cultures. Yeah, and I just think that teachers need to realize how hurtful their words can be, even if they don't mean to be hurtful. They just need to be somewhat careful more, so, yeah.
Thank you, Nani. So our mission statement is the Diversity and Relevance Committee, in keeping with the goals of the RHS School Improvement Team, will continue to cultivate a culturally responsive and community of awareness that celebrates and supports the diversity of the student body. Students will be provided with opportunities to share their experience and voice concerns while continuing to develop the Diversity and Relevance Committee and the Student Council to be cultural and institutional change agents. I don't think Emma's on. So we've, we've really, if you go down to the next slide, there are some additions to the faculty side, but when we were looking at building the committee, we really wanted to have the representation that you saw in that demographic chart from slide two on the committee. And so, you know, that is our black students, it is our brown students, we have, we have a connection with our, you know, fledgling GSA group. So we're looking at trying to make sure that we have equal representation. So it is like the, it is a cross-section of the building, being able to voice those concerns and to problem solve and how to correct those things. So if you want to slide one more down? Dr. Browner?
Thank you, Mr. Vance. First, I have to say the same thing now that I said to Mr. Vance in the meeting last week. I should have given him a, a different picture. This is a young picture, a younger picture when I had hair from a Thompson Picture Day. But anyway, I have to thank both Mr. Vance and Mr. Monahan for welcoming me to become a part of this committee. Though I do not teach at Rogers, I teach Social Studies at Thompson. I'm very proud of all of the student speakers who have offered words thus far. Talia, I did not teach her in grade seven, although I've known her since she was a little girl at church. And her great-grandfather is Reverend Robert Williams. Anyway, I taught Nani and, and Delicia and Maggie. And I'm just so proud of these students who have offered their voices to these most important social justice issues. And I have to give, I'm not gonna read this whole statement. I'm certain that Mr. Vance will forward this presentation to the school committee so you can all read it at your leisure. But I have to say, I have to single out Delicia Allen. Delicia, back in the fall, I want to say maybe October, November timeframe, sent me an email at Thompson and she was a little uncertain if I was still teaching there. And this is year number twenty-three, Delicia, I'm still there. And she sent me an email and she expressed to me how much she appreciated all the things that she learned in Seventy-one Social Studies when she was twelve years old. And I don't think we realize as educators the full measure of the impact we have on students until they leave our classrooms. And I was greatly encouraged to hear Delicia express to me how much she enjoyed my class, enjoyed the things that I tried to teach them, enjoyed or was encouraged by the model that I tried to present as an educated teacher of color. And Delicia expressed how much a difference I made in her life. And that meant more to me than I can express right now. But Delicia asked me to be a member of the DRC or the Diversity and Relevance Committee. And I immediately absolutely told her that I would because she expressed many concerns that she's experienced, as well as the experiences of many of her classmates and peers at Rogers. And though I do not teach at Rogers, I absolutely told her that I would be glad and be proud to be a part of this committee to represent the teaching staff in Newport and the importance of addressing these issues of social justice for not just our students and teachers, but our entire school community. So again, Delicia, thank you for inviting me. And again to Mr. Vance and Mr. Monahan, thank you for the support that you have given to me personally as a teacher at Thompson to be a welcome member of this committee.
Thank you, Dr. Browner. If you want to slide, go down one more slide. So in our conversations, as this, this committee has come together, the areas that we're looking at, you know, addressing or working on are institutional bias, cultural awareness and sensitivity, communication, access, cultural representation, community connections, and curricular relevance. And all of these things are really, really important for us to be able to connect with all of our students, but then also with the community at large and do it in a way where all of our families access the information and all of our, our students feel valued and represented in the building. Do you want to slide down a little bit further? So, like I stated earlier, we wanted to make sure that we had a great cross-section of the students in our building. And so Anna Gomez was another member of the faculty to join the committee and to help us connect with our Spanish families and our Spanish-speaking students. She's been a wonderful addition and we have a, we have a pretty significant number of Spanish-speaking students that are now on the committee with us. Uh, she's been a wonderful addition and we have a, we have a pretty significant number of, um, Spanish-speaking students that are now on the committee with us. If you want to slide, I think, is that the last slide or was it one after that?
That's the last slide.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I'll say it again, like I said, at our faculty, at our faculty meeting, I am so proud of these students that have been able to stand up and share their stories, be able to stand in front of the faculty and say what has taken place and identify what has not been working. Um, it takes a lot of color, uh, courage to do that. So, I, I'm missing, sorry, Jala Leonard has also been in addition to the, to the meeting, to our committee. Jala, if you want to speak to, to your experience to this point?
Hello, everyone. Um, well, a couple of weeks ago, um, I was in Mr. Vance's office and I was having, uh, Trish Lynch, uh, read, um, or proofread a paper that I had to hand in because I'm in, um, Boston College Educational Leadership Program. And the paper was, uh, for my introduction to education and leadership and change. So she was reading my paper and my paper was about, uh, it was an equity audit, um, on equal representation between teachers and students in urban schools. So I did a couple of schools, uh, in Rhode Island along with Rogers High School. And while she was reading it, um, we were just talking about it and Mr. Vance heard and then he, he asked me if I wanted to join the DRC. And at first I knew nothing about it and I was like, I don't know, just tell me more. But then as he was talking, I mean, it just, it hit home. Uh, a lot of stuff that I talked in my paper, it hit home, a lot of the things that, um, we discussed in my, in two of my classes. And, and it's just also like, at the moment, uh, well, I think we have two right now, but at, for a short, short period of time, I was the only black teacher at the school. And I had students who used to always come up to me and ask me how I felt about it or what can I do or what should I do? And, and to be honest, like, I really didn't have the answer. And especially like young, um, when I was early in my career, when I was young, Mr. Leonard, because I'm now 22-year in Rogers High School, Mr. Leonard, but when I was young, Mr. Leonard, um, I wasn't really focused on issues uh, that were going on because as a young teacher, like you're, you're a gun hole. You want to make sure you're, you're, you're doing right for your, your students in front of you. You want to be listening to your department head, you want to be, um, just getting pointers from the older teachers or the veteran teachers. But once I started slowly getting ingrained into the system year after year, I started seeing things in like, oh no, this, this, this isn't good. Oh no, how can I address this? And I say, to be honest, part of me is a little, I wouldn't say ashamed, but part of me is a little upset with myself. Because something like, in my opinion, something like this should have been brought up years, years, years ago. But I can't really focus on the past. We, the best thing, the best way to grow is to focus on the present and to work your way to the, to the future. So I, I'm happy that this program or this committee has been formed. I'm happy to be a part of this committee and I look forward to not only helping Rogers High School, but helping the rest of the school district and to be honest, helping the whole town of Newport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. And so let me apologize, the, when I put in the backup, it was prior to the faculty meeting. And so your slides were added to the faculty meeting and not necessarily on this one. So I, my, my apologies. So like I was saying, I'm just hugely proud of, of our, our kids to be able to share their stories and to be able to put that out there about what needs to change. Talia said it to me at one of our meetings because we were really kind of, you know, wrestling with, do we want to do a Q and A at the faculty meeting? And Talia's response was, change happens through, through communication. We have to have the conversation. And I was just like, that's it, that's it, we're doing Q and A. And it was, it was great. Our, you know, the faculty really responded well, um, and want to dig in and, and do this work and do this work for the long term, for the greater good. You know, so at that point, you know, if you guys have questions that you might want to ask?
Anybody from the school? Luisa, I see your hand up. Go right ahead, Luisa, now get to Stephanie, I see you as well.
Yeah, I guess I, I just want to say this is great. I, um, I think this is a great first step to work within the buildings and within Rogers. And, you know, we as school committee are always seeking input on policies and practices. So if you want to report back to us as a team, we would love that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Stephanie. Ms. Winslow? You're still, you're, you're still muted. I see your lips moving, but you're muted. It, there you go. Looks like you're off now.
Okay. Um, I was saying, I wish I had a group like this at Rogers when I was there. I, I'm amazed at the youth today and how much awareness you guys have, not only for each other, but your common and your different experiences. And it gives me a ton of hope. Um, I believe you are on the right side of history. And the best part is that you have years ahead of you to bring about real lasting enormous change to not only just the school system, but our country. So thank you. And like Luisa said, please do let the school committee know when you want our support. One of my personal goals this term was to enact policies, um, that will bring about more equity. You know, training for our staff, uh, encouraging more student voice, assessing academic opportunities and discipline practices. And, and I also just want to say on a personal note, you know, when I hear someone share their personal story of racism, um, just like you all had the courage to share. You know, when, when some of my friends will tell their stories, it really fires me up. Um, Maggie, you definitely belong on this committee because it's people like us who look like you and I, who need to hear Delicia's stories and Makalani's stories and Talia's stories. I want to thank our BIPOC students for your willingness and your wisdom and you inspire me.
I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead, Becky.
How often is your group able to meet?
So we, we've been meeting once or twice a month since the beginning of November. You know, depending on what we were looking to do, it was twice a month. Some of the beginning meetings, it was a little more time in between.
Doc, Dr. Flowers, I think, go right ahead. I'm not sure, Mr. Leonard, would, will you say? Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to say something. Okay, go right ahead, Dr. Flowers.
Thank you very much. Uh, I want to thank all, everyone, students, faculty, administrators for spearheading this particular group. It is something that really, um, is needed. Having been in the trenches myself for a number of years, uh, I still say that when we talk about the history of any group, it should not just be allotted to one month or a few weeks. And that's just one way of getting the, uh, information out to everyone about different ethnic groups, racial groups and so forth. But I think what Dr. Browner said, that educators never realize how much they impact their students until all of a sudden someone says something to you, sometimes many, many years later. And that's an important point too. I think this is a message to the teachers, to the students themselves and to the rest of us. You know, we talk in, in all of our strategic plan and everything else that goes on about One Newport. And this is a perfect example of how our young people are, uh, maybe just unconsciously, uh, holding up that whole brand, if you want to call it, of the Newport Public Schools initiating the concept of One Newport. Not just in the, in the public school system, but, uh, the, the whole place, the, the whole city. I, I firmly believe, listening to what was said here, that there's a lot of courage among these young people. I was just writing the word courage down when Mr. Vance said the courage that these young people had to exhibit to be able to say to other people, look, you know, someone said this to me, someone said, I use this other term to, um, my fellow students. This is, this is really courage in action here. And I feel that the city of Newport, One Newport, really can and should be a role model for all of the other communities. Let's start on the island, let's start right here in the state of Rhode Island. And who knows where we can take this. I think this is a perfect example of how, um, all these age, all, we're a lot of ages here, it was quite a wide span. And I say, go for it and anything that any of us can do on the school committee to support you and lift you up, we're here for you. Thank you very much.
Go right ahead, Mr. Leonard. I see your hand up. Go right ahead.
Well, um, to piggyback on Dr. Flowers there, and that's one thing I was thinking in terms of, like, if you, if you really look at, not only the school systems, or school system, excuse me, but if you just look at the town in general, um, it's unique. It is extremely special. I hear a lot of the, um, I talked to a lot of my classmates in my program about their school systems and, and things like that. And to be honest, I always say, well, it's nothing like, uh, the Newport School District. And like I said, pigging back on Dr. Flowers, with, with that uniqueness and, and that One Newport, I think that not only if we can get this message out, if we can truly learn to, to work with each other, to respect each other, to listen to those hard conversations, to, to respect those hard conversations, even if you don't agree, um, imagine, um, what we could do in terms of changing, not only changing ourselves, but slowly drifting out to other, to other school districts, other towns. And the next thing you know, this would be a Rhode Island thing. And the next thing you know, it, it would just start flowing out to other states. One state after another state. And, and to be honest, I always said, um, and talking to a lot of my friends, I mean, I think it's time that, like, if we're going to call ourselves the United States of America, then you know what? It's time to start doing the, to grow slowly because when you grow, if you grow too fast, you miss it, but slowly grow and get that united back on the states. And I think we're going to be definitely the pioneers to help, to help put that united back on the states and do big things. So I think, I, I'm, I'm proud to be a, a teacher in the Newport School District for sure.
Are there other members of the school committee that wanted to speak? All right. I, I just wanted to say, uh, as we close out, I'm very, it's great work. It's definitely conversations that need to happen. Um, most proud of the students, Delicia, Talia and Makalani, I think. Do they, is Lani, is that what I hear? They, Laney? What do they say for short? Because it's a lot easier than trying to say that, but.
Nani.
Lani?
Nani, N-A-N-I.
Nani, Nani. Oh, that's a lot better. Okay, I got Nani. Thank you.
On the first day of school, when she's 12, try that on the first day of school. That was something. And she made it very clear, you can call me Nani. I'll never forget that.
Well, I, I'm glad to say Nani. So I'll say Nani and, and Talia and, and Delicia. It's, it's important that your voices, like Mr. Vance said, uh, the conversation can't start if there aren't voices and there's not voices to be heard. So a lot of credit to you, you guys for letting your voices and sharing your voices, Maggie as well. Like Stephanie said, everybody's voice is important and conversation can't be had without voices. So, uh, it's great to continue. I look forward to continuing the work. It's a great start at Rogers. Um, I'm excited to see this trickle down and come right through our district and our community, I think, as Mr. Leonard said. Uh, so, uh, thank you all for participating. Uh, it's a great conversation, much-needed conversation. And I look forward to, uh, hearing how it continues and grows in our community for the better of everybody. So thank you all. Uh, I'm not sure, Mr. Vance, are you all set? Did you have anything to add or?
Nope, I just wanted to thank them again for sharing their stories and having that courage to be able to speak up and share it publicly. You know, I know that is tough, uh, but again, it needs to be heard for us to be able to make adjustments and to fix things so that everybody, everybody's experience at Rogers is positive. So thank you guys. Thank you, Talia, Delicia, Nani. Thank you, Dr., uh, Mr. Leonard and Dr. Browner for sharing.
Yes, thank you all. And, uh, I look forward, we'll get that, that workshop, we'll discuss about the workshop. I think it's needed and, um, I look forward to that when we can have a, that hour discussion. Not that we weren't close to it, but when we can have that hour discussion, I think it's worthwhile and needed. So thank you all for taking the time and especially our students. Keep, keep your voices and, uh, let them be heard. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So it's a good segue, uh, two presentations, uh, back to back. And, uh, the next presentation is, uh, again, voice is being heard by our students on, uh, social justice and, and there. So the next one leads us, the next presentation is on the, I skipped ahead and lost my place. I apologize. I just need to, it's a presentation on the, uh, Black Lives Matter Student Project, which was to, uh, put, BL, BLM, uh, letters on the basketball court. I think that, uh, it's Mr. Corley, I think, who's going to, uh, lead us into the segue, I hope, at least.
You hope, right?
He's unmuted, so we're ready to go, so.
You hope, you hope. So, I, um, I will admit I was not ready for a presentation, so don't worry, Ms., Ms. Nash. You don't have my, my doc that you have to bring up. We'll just keep it as is here on the screen. Thank you, thank you all for this opportunity tonight. And, uh, like I would just dovetails into what we just heard about, what goes on here at Rogers. I'm a Rogers graduate. Um, I've lived in this town for a while, not Newport native, but I don't care. I'm still proud of that too. And, uh, I think diversity is absolutely one of the best things that goes on in this area. And with COVID and then things that started happening, um, with whether it be George Floyd and all that stuff before it, spending a lot of time by myself, uh, I started thinking and talking to some other coaches, like what, just what's something? My job is to help support student athletes and just conversations. And nothing really came out of it, just my eyes were open personally, um, then professionally had some conversations. I do talk to Dave Connell, who's an advertising, new media design teacher. He's helped me out in the past in a variety of projects, whether it be making uniforms to invitations, uh, anything his class has been able to produce, we've used that before. So some discussions led that way. And, uh, from that, he then had a conversation in his class with, uh, the involved three young ladies that are on here now, Maya Brooks, Maeve Crowley and Ellie Margolis. And how, with how the world's working, uh, how can we show our support or, or what's something this school could be, could do. And the idea of Black Lives Matter on the floor was born. Credit goes to all, to these girls. They designed it, they processed it, they executed it, they applied it themselves, you know, from start to finish. So it, it, it does much better in this world and from a student perspective, when their passion is, gets to be infused, it just brings more to the project as opposed to the old worksheet mentality here, do this, and they get nothing out, and, and no one gets anything out of it. So, um, I'm just glad I had some conversations, I'm glad that these teachers that I talked to also had conversations and it kind of came full circle and, you know, saw these three girls come down and they're measuring and I'm like, what are you, what are you doing down here? And I, and they said it and I was immediately excited and I thought it was a wonderful thing. It's been, uh, well-received. Uh, I've talked to some of the PE teachers that have kids come in that's, that immediately see it and and honestly, sometimes think it's about time or it's, that it's, that it's there. So I'm very proud of what these girls were able to do and, um, you know, thank also Dave Connell for his help and just people listening. That's how, Mr. Vance said in his presentation before, um, from Talia Scott talking to conversations. It's just conversations and good things are born from that. So, oh, there, there's my presentation.
So, I, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not putting them on the spot. I see, uh, So, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not putting them on the spot, I see Maya, Maeve, and Ellie are with us, I'm not sure if any of the girls wanted to give us their thoughts on how this unfolded, how it came to be, in their words. You certainly don't have to, but I'm giving you the opportunity, so if any of you want to say a few words, go right ahead.
I'm Maya Brooks, I'm a sophomore at Rogers, I'm in the middle, obviously, and this project was something I am so happy that I was able to be a part of, for the main reason of conversation, because racism is 100%, it's, you're not born with it, you're, you're taught to be racist, you're taught to single out different people. And so what this does is, I think it definitely brings about conversation, because people may ask, why do Black Lives Matter? And then that's when you go in to tell them why they do. So I definitely think that it's something great to have on the court, and something great for everyone to walk into that gym to see.
Oops, I'm muted, so, thank you, I see Ellie, go ahead Ellie, did you just unmute? Did you want to say, go right ahead?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, like, same thing as Maya, like, especially because we all play on the basketball team, it's really cool when other teams walk in and they just see what we're about, I don't know.
Yeah, I agree with Ellie, it was a really great thing to be a part of, especially to do it with my two best friends, it was awesome.
Thank you, all right, anybody, any members of the school committee have any questions, comments for the girls, or for, I see Ms. Boatright, go right ahead, I see your finger waving.
Yeah, I, I do want to say something, because I know I've heard some people who are, think this is controversial in our town, but I do not, I want to say that I'm very proud of this. I see this as, you know, a step into a history lesson, and because of, just as Mr. Colley was talking about, since George Floyd and Black Lives Matter protests last spring, and probably because we had a lot more time in our lives with COVID, I have gotten very much into an area where I was very ignorant in, and I think that it's very important that we expose the history of Black lives in America, that's been going on for 400 years, and there's a lot of very bad things in the history, from, you know, kidnapping them, bringing them here as slaves, and all the way to George Floyd and the prison system today, which I just recently learned, in 1970s only had, I think it was like 270,000 people in it, and now has 2.3 million people in it, of which 70% are of color. So I embrace this, and also want to just bring up a community thing, because it is something that people learn, you're right, Maya. But I have a friend in Newport who is a business owner for 20-plus years, and when they had to get out of a situation with a lease that they had, because it had gone up three times, had to look for other properties, and was not able to get one, and finally had a white counterpart lead the discussion, and was, you know, was able to get in, and still when they showed up to sign the papers, were not allowed to. And so there is racism that goes on even on Equidnic Island, and I think that this is a great step forward, and I thank the kids and the teachers for coming together and putting this on the floor of the gym, it's a great step, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm having a lot of technology trouble tonight. Um, yeah, I, Louise, I'm going to echo you again, I did, I heard, I heard people question this move, and, you know, can we allow it, does it set a precedent, what about other causes? And anytime somebody asks me, you know, my response to those who'll see the Black Lives Matter logo and feel uncomfortable or resentful, I want you to recognize negative reaction as a call to personal action, to educate yourself, listen, read, Google, explore with an open heart and open mind. The story here is long, it's often incredibly inspiring, and it's too often brutal, and it deserves your attention. So I also want to say, I'm, I'm really proud of the students, the teachers who chose to make a statement and install this logo in our gym, because logos are powerful, it's instant recognition, brand, of a mission, of a set of values, of a story. This logo is a symbol of the work that many Newport public schools are doing, we heard about that tonight, right? It's slow, it's incremental, and often difficult change, but it's required to bring awareness, the story of Black Americans and our nation. Now, I hope that those listening will appreciate that we're trying to educate ourselves, and to be anti-racist, to empathize with all the people in our community, to have respect for different cultures and experiences, to stand up for one another, and to work towards justice and equity. So again, I applaud the teachers, I applaud the students who made this statement, and my advice to you is to never give up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other school committee members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Larry.
So I think they answered my, how about four or five questions, I think they answered the first two, and they think that they didn't let them chime in. So I wonder what was the, the decision and the criteria in the process? If they think they answered that, I'm fine with that, but what, how did they make this decision, and what was the criteria used? First, I have three other questions, a couple other questions.
Go ahead, any, go ahead, Maya, if you.
Anyone?
So, um, like I said in the beginning, it was, I think the main purpose of this is to bring conversation, for people to be able to ask questions about it, and for people like me to be able to answer, you know, why Black Lives Matter, how we're being suppressed, and so that was one of the big reasons to have it on the court, and also to make sure that everybody that walks into that gym, that walks into that school feels welcomed, and that they know that they're wanted in that school. We were able to do this in a day, actually, we were handed the project in the morning, they were talking about it, and we were like, oh my gosh, yes, we'd love to do this, we were given the opportunity, and so we went down to the gym in the morning, and we put down, we took all the measurements, and by the end of the day at 12:30, we had it all down.
So a follow-up to that, so who, who gave you the permission to put that on the floor? The principal, the athletic director, who gave you permission?
Mr. Colley and Mr. Connell were the two teachers that were supervising us while doing this.
So then, this is probably above mine and your pay grade, don't they think they need permission of the school committee to do something like that? Mr. Colley can answer that.
There was a lot of a peer effort, too, we talked about it with a bunch of different classmates, and we all thought it was a really good idea, so, but then we obviously had the support from our teachers.
And I also feel that it's something great, and nothing that anybody regrets, because everybody walks into that school and should feel welcomed, and that is a great way to show that they are welcome, so I don't think anybody is against.
So, what's Mr. Colley's thoughts on that?
I love what the kids, I said, I, I think the kids, they took an idea, and they infused a, a purpose and a passion, which is what we are in education, education-based athletics to, inside a building, it's all education-based, and we want to harness that, their dedication and passion, and not step on it, and I, I think I'm proud of this, and I said, these are three girls on our basketball team, and I'd be, I bet you, you ask them in 30 years, their best part of a basketball court, and this might be their answer right here, and like the, the difference they made in a community, as opposed to how many points they might have scored, or how many championships or games they would have won. I think there's nothing more important that they're going to learn their lives than right here, so I stand with it.
So what do you think, do?
So, so Mr. Larry, I just want to give Mr. Vance, I know you're on the phone, but Mr. Vance was also motioning that he, he was well aware of it, and he just wanted to add his input, so let, let's let him speak for a minute, no, Mr. Larry, hold on for a minute, Vance would like to speak, and then go right ahead.
So, so again, as an institution, we want to build character and value sets in our students that love acceptance and understanding. And so this project, being that it was student-driven, student-created, that showed that level of understanding of, of society as a whole, and the character, to move forward with such a project, those are things that we want to develop in our kids. And when we're, we're talking about, we want kids to own their learning, and own being in school, and educating themselves and others, this is a prime example of that. I'm, I'm so proud of that, that vinyl that's on that floor, I think Maya, Maeve, and Ellie, what they did was amazing, and it is such an, an amazing display of our culture here in Rogers, and how we embrace everybody, and we are trying to do the best for all of our kids, so.
So, Mr. Vance, we have a lot of military population, and obviously some people in the school committee, military people here, too. So what happens if they show up to you next week and say, we want to put a veterans, you know, disabled veterans thing on the floor? Because you made that decision now, you didn't let the school committee make that decision for you, we're the one that represents people, I'm not sure you should have made that without permission of the school committee, but that's something for us to decide going forward. And, but that being said, you know, just character in military students, they show up next week and ask you to put in a disabled veterans thing on the floor, are you going to allow them to do that?
So we definitely want to have conversations about what that project is, and how it was created, and how it moved forward, and I wouldn't, I would not get in the way if it was something that was seen as, as valuable, definitely.
And just.
It's very valuable.
I just want to say that I think, I mean, I can't throw 100 things on the basketball court, but I think as a school and a community, we are so welcoming and understanding that we would definitely find a way to get it up in that school, to make sure that everyone knows that we stand for everybody, and that we support everybody.
Thank you.
Dr. Flowers, and then to Ms. Winslow.
Very briefly, before this last question was posed, I was thinking, here are three young ladies, these students are young adults, they really are, and in a matter of such a short while, and here's Maya, you said, by, you know, by noon time, everything was done, they didn't dither around with, well, we have to have a committee, and we have to set this, and we have to do that, they just got right to it, they got the idea, they approached the right people, and they got it done, and maybe we, adults, who sit on committees and groups and planning sessions, maybe we should learn sometime to say, let's stop dithering around and get things done if it has to be done. Congratulations, girls, and to the people who gave you permission to do that, keep up that good work, good for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Winslow, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I want to say that this is not the school committee's decision, in my, my mind, we're not here to micromanage what goes on in the schools, our job is to create policy and oversee the budget, and one of our policies and our goals, well, a lot of policy that we have is maybe not too specific yet, but our goal, certainly for the superintendent, have been to bring about equity and opportunity in our schools for all of our kids. And when you really take a look, and I mean really take a look, at the history of Black Americans in this country, and the, I'm going to call it persecution, and that's putting it lightly, for hundreds of years, what has happened, it's not fair to compare it to any other group, it's really not. So I don't, I don't stand for trying to take away from what these girls have done, and say, well, what about other groups? It's not about other groups, it's about Black lives.
So I don't know, I don't see anybody else from the school committee, so I'm just going to say, girls, to, to Maya, Maeve, and Ellie, I don't really think as far as you, you could have gone as high as you wanted for permission, I don't think it would have changed, I would like to think that with your drive and your passion for what you were doing, your voices, and your explanation, and your thought, and I think, and I also think it's well-spoken that you were here tonight to explain what you did, and your, in your backseat, so I, I don't think you could have kept asking for permission, I don't think the outcome would have been any different. I think we'd be talking about the presentation you did tonight, and, and again, like I said earlier, you, I know you girls were all on for the presentation on the Diversity and Relevance Committee, and again, it's important for your voices to be heard, let your voices be heard, and I give you three a lot of credit, I'm sure there's probably other students behind you, so again, I applaud you, and welcome your voices and your thoughts, so good work, congratulations on a, on a great project in representing your school well, so I appreciate it, and just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls, thank you for everything.
Thank you, good job.
Nice job.
Thank you.
And thanks for being here tonight, thanks for being here tonight with us as well, too, and your families, I see all your families behind you, they're supporting you too, so thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Have a good night, thank you all. So that gets us through the presentations, and into public comment, Mrs. Nash, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We do not.
Alrighty, that would lead us into our action items, our first action item is 6.1, and it's a declaration of trust, it's a declaration of trust to be provided for the consideration to establish a Rogers High School tech endowment. Shortly after the bond was passed, Bob Powers came to me, and, you know, said to me, I want to do, I want to get going, ramping up on the same thing that we did for Pell when it was built, with the Rogers High School tech endowment, we need to get it ramped up and get working on it, so tonight is the first, first step, if this is approved, as I suspect, I hope it will be tonight, there'll be other steps to give the committee the necessary leeway and guidance and policy access to do the things they need to do. So the first, first step would be to have 6.1, which is a declaration of trust between, to establish the Rogers High School tech endowment, is there a motion to approve it as presented, and a second. I see Mrs. Bolin making the motion with Dr. Flowers, a second. Are there any questions on the, on the, on the endowment, or anything from the school committee that we could have staff? I don't know if Mr. Powers is with us tonight or not, but any questions from anybody?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Larry.
So a quick little history lesson with the Thompson Bond, and I hope this is very similar to the Pell bond, where the money is going to be with the city sitting there, am I correct? Like, they made a million dollars, and they pay out of it, and it stays in the cities.
Yep, you are correct, it, it's going to be administered, and the money will be accepted and administered and stored, and custodian of the money will be the city, as it is now, with similar, you know, qualifications to spend the money, put on it, similar to the Pell, that it's based on the earnings, and that's how it will be dispersed down the road. So, yes, very similar to the Pell.
Great, yeah, because we had a little trouble, but I would say trouble is the proper word, but Thompson, where there was a bomb invasion, there's a million dollars to wire the building. Unfortunately, even the people that are smart in the committee, and that wasn't me, but they, they thought that we needed to wire that whole building, but four or five years later, even less, wireless came in, and we didn't need it. So the money, well, we used most of it to wire the building, the money that was left over wasn't out of the city, and the Newport Public Health Foundation to have money and use it. Now, they used it for good cause, I'm not saying anything, but some of the people were like, oh, so when Bob Powers started the second one for Pell, he knew to get aligned with the city, so this wouldn't happen again, and I will support this, because there's a line with the city, and the money will be, stay in there. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or comments from the school committee? Not seeing any.
Wait, I have one.
Oh, sorry, Beck, go right ahead, Ms. Bolin.
I wanted to really thank Bob Power, because, you know, this is the third time now that he has, you know, gone out to the community, and it's, it's a lot of work, I mean, he just finished the Pell campaign, and I have to really hand it to him and his commitment to this city. this is the third time now that he has, you know, gone out to the community. And it's, it's a lot of work. I mean, he just finished the Pell campaign. And I have to really hand it to him and his commitment to this city for all he does.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Anybody else? Comments or questions? Not seeing any. Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the declaration of trust to establish the tech endowment?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatwright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Great, thank you. Thank you all. Next item on the action items is 6.2. It's a request for approval of the 2021-2022 Program of Studies for the Rogers High School, Rogers High School, excuse me. Mr. Monahan is here tonight to summarize. He gave us a overview last month, I believe. And this is the finalized document and before. So, Mr. Monahan, just one minute, I'll get a, is there a motion to approve the program of studies? I see Ms. Boatwright, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Now we've had a motion, a second, Mr. Monahan, if you wanted to give us a little overview and then possibly answer any questions that we may have. So, Mr. Monahan.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Gomes. Kathy, I, I have this pretty much the same visual that I had last month. I, I don't think I have sharing capability at the moment. If you can either allow me to share or if you have it up and can share, either way is fine. But while we're figuring that out. Yeah.
Be able to share right now, Mr. Monahan?
Oh, alright, give me just a moment. Do we have that up? So, no, no major changes this year, as I, as I had said before, when we talked about it. We have begun the course selection process and we are using the, using Zello, which is our, our individual learning plan tool. In the English department, we are, we are floating the hip hop as contemporary poetry is really just a little bit of a shift. Focused on poetry still, but using something a little more modern that might get some more students to study poetry and get a little more interest. The actual course has been there, so it's just a modification of it. As Mr. Young had said, cosmetology, it's still going to exist. It's just no longer going to resume with its career tech approval, which means that we would have to make agreements if students from out of district wanted to come. But otherwise, our students won't, won't notice the difference as far as that goes. And I had clarified the JROTC, we're not really changing anything. We had just tried a semester introduction to that program versus the full year. We've, we've taken that out just because it hasn't been, it hasn't been utilized. And so, you know, students who want to join the JROTC, they still can, just like they always could by taking that full year introductory class. We've added next levels of some of our newer programs. And AOIT and PTEC, those students, instead of taking the essentials of technology, will take AOIT Level One. That's going to, the, the big shift there, it's going to help the PTEC students to get more of a robust introduction to the technology that they're going to need, that's going to help them be successful in their URI, sorry, CCRI coursework that will come down the line. Everything else will, will remain the same. As I said, we've already begun some of this work to do course selections. And that's, that's where we stand right now.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Dring, go right ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Monahan, what, what is the reason behind the fact that cosmetology is no longer RIDE-approved, NACTAC program? Why, why is that? Because that's a great product, that's a great program. I know kids that graduated with me 30 years ago that are still practicing cosmetology. What was their logic behind that?
Mike, I'm, I'm on.
Okay.
So the, the CTE Board of Directors had deemed that cosmetology is no longer a high-growth, high-demand, high-wage program. So it's, it's not a RIDE-approved program any longer. You can run the program, but you don't get financial support from, from the state any longer.
Okay, thank you.
Must be a bunch.
Mr. Dring. It was a long and drawn out, it was about a two-year process with us as CTE directors trying to keep it. And the board members eventually not in favor of keeping it as a RIDE-approved program.
I think, I think the chair is correct on his.
Must be a bunch of bald people that haven't gotten a haircut lately. Because I, I don't, I certainly don't think it's a, not a high-demand occupancy that you can't make a living doing, so.
Doesn't make much sense.
No, but it's another bureaucratic decision that doesn't.
That's what it is.
Any other questions from the school committee?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leary.
So either Mr. Vance or we can answer this question. It appears we have 12 CTE programs, am I correct?
Whoever can answer that can jump in. Mr. Young might be.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what do we do if we have a, we're down 158 kids from last year. I'm not sure, I don't know off of Rogers, I don't know what that number is. So what are we going to do if we have a small number of kids in one of these programs? Like, let's say there's four kids in auto or something like that. What, what are we going to do? What, what number, I guess I could rephrase that. At what number do we not offer that course?
I, I don't know what that exact number is. I mean, I, I think this year, COVID-19 year is a little different when we're talking numbers. But we, our numbers in auto and most of our programs have been fairly consistent.
I think auto has four kids in it right now.
Right now it does, yes, Mr. Leary. But we had a, a number of students withdraw because they weren't able to, to come here to take the, the program from outside of the district.
So what, what number do you decide that we can't do that?
So I, I don't, I, I don't, judging on the look on everybody's faces, I don't think that number has been established. You can't see him, Bobby, but Mr. Leary, I'm sorry, on the phone. Judging from the look on their faces, I can't answer. But I would ask Mr. Young, roughly, you know, pre-COVID, go back a year ago, and what was the enrollment in the auto class? You know, at this time in 2020?
It was 12. I think it was 12.
Yeah, so it's safe to say that, you know, the, the four is not a good indicator of the interest or the number of students taking it at this time.
And we don't know how many of those 158 kids left from last year for Rogers.
I, I can tell you, right now, the CTE numbers are over 400. They're 420 out of the 650-plus students. So the CTE numbers are still, still pretty good.
Alright, Mr. Leary. Go ahead.
I'm not going to go further with this, but this other program, like the Marine, has six kids in it and things like that also. So it just seems to be at some point that you have to decide.
That's correct. I, I agree with you on that, 100%.
Thank you.
Ms. Boatwright, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I had asked for some of the, every year, I've asked Mr. Young for some of the numbers. And really, if you go back to 2016, there was only 257 students in the CTE program. And this year, even with COVID, there's 482 kids into the program, which is up from 2019 at 473 kids. Part of it is because we're doing more programs. But as we just heard tonight, is they are combining AIT and PTEC. Some of them are, are new. And I do think that COVID has made it very difficult to do some of these project-based learning. But I'm, I'm very supportive of career training along with academic training for all students. Because I think that it, it's a good thing. So I think the career tech programs have done a great job. I'm, I think COVID has made it very difficult and hopefully that will come back next year. So, thank you.
Mr. Gomes?
Go, Mr. Leary.
Same thing as last time. I get very sick of some of these people in the committee with me. They'll try to paint me as whatever they want to paint me as. I'm just looking at the numbers and saying, four kids seems like a low number to me. And I know the numbers in the past are there. In the same way with the last thing. I'm not against what went on with the Black Lives Matter. I just want to make sure the other groups have the opportunity they want to. So they try to paint me this brush all the time. It's almost like, let me see this, some people, I won't get this. It's almost like we have four flat tires on the car. And we're talking about the driver. And for those who don't get that, call me after, I'll explain it to them.
Alrighty, thank you. Any other comments from the school committee? I'm not seeing any. So, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the 2021-2022 Rogers High School Program of Studies as presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatwright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Great. Thank you. Let me just get back to my screen now that it popped up. The next action item that takes us to 6.3, this is a request for approval of the subcommittee appointments. These are the subcommittee appointments as discussed at our retreat. Is there a motion to approve the subcommittees as presented this evening? I see Ms. Boland making the motion, seconded by Dr. Flowers. And any questions or discussion from the school committee? Dr. Flowers?
One little bit of a thing. The, where it says Substance Abuse Prevention Task Force, the name has been changed to Prevention Coalition for the past several years. That's just a housekeeping.
That, that's the entire name of it, correct? Prevention Coalition.
Yes.
We will make that correction and when we put these out. Any other questions, comments from the committee? Mr. Dring?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let you know, I'm having pretty significant internet problems. I keep fading out and I lose a connection and then I come back. So if I disappear, it's not on purpose.
We'll see, we'll keep an eye on you, okay?
Thanks.
If you have any technical, just do a thumbs up, thumbs down when we vote. So, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. So I've, haven't noticed if you are. So I know it's kind of, it's a fluky night tonight. So the one thing I will say before we do vote on this, I had a call from the Newport Public Education Foundation. I believe Kate is the, Kate Boget is the new president. And I had a conversation with her over the weekend. And apparently our attendance as school committee members hasn't been very good at the Newport Public Education Foundation. So I'll just remind everybody, and we're going to do a better job of reminding, the way we do that is, you know, monthly, a different member goes depending on the alphabet and the month of the year. So I just promised her I'd put that plug in, that COVID put a damper on everything and they went to virtual meetings. But we have to be mindful that Newport Public Education Foundation welcomes our involvement with their committee and their work. So with that said, Mr. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the subcommittees as presented?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Boatwright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Guys, you guys were all reading lips pretty good. It took you a long time to tell me. Well, I was reading, I wasn't looking at the screen. Colleen's going like this.
I can't unmute myself tonight very well, so.
Well, that's okay. I, I caught on. But next item is 6.4. It's a request for approval of a memorandum of agreement between Looking Upwards and Newport Public Schools. Director Andrew requests approval of the attached memorandum of agreement to provide in-person support to two new students as required by their individual, IEP Individual Education Plan. So is there a motion to approve as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And I'll let Director Andrew give a quick little overview and then we'll take any questions that there may be. And you're muted, Director Andrew. I don't know if you're trying, I see you're on here, but you're muted. There you go. You're unmuted now, so. Maybe.
Alright, so this is Dr., this is Dr. Jermaine Superintendent. I think Director Andrew is having technical difficulties. This contract is to fulfill, as stated, services we need to provide to some of our students that have recently moved into the district.
Alright, thank you. Are there any questions on the agreement or for Dr. Jermaine, Director Andrew's absence? I don't see any hands or finger wiggling. I, okay. Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call vote to approve the memorandum of agreement as presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatwright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
I don't know if Director Andrew can hear, but we did better. Maybe she'd have technical difficulty. So, thanks for being here, Director Andrew. Next item, 6.5. It's a request for approval of the fiscal 2021 amended budget. And I see Ms. Boatwright sponsored this and Mr. Gonzalez is with us. I'll go to, is there a motion to approve as presented? Ms. Boatwright's and seconded by Ms. Winslow. I'll go to Ms., Ms. Boatwright and then she can dump off to Mr. Gonzalez if necessary. So, Ms. Boatwright.
Yeah, just, this is coming before everybody and I'm sure Mr. Gonzalez will say, but because the state finally approved their budget and so we got our money and it was at the higher rate, we were being conservative. But they held harmless school departments, which I think is great. And I just want to commend them for supporting the increased funding that they had promised to schools, both Newport and the state of Rhode Island, because it's critical. So I wanted to put that plug into the state. Thank you. On to you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have much else to add outside of the summary sheet. Are there specific questions that would like to be addressed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leary, go right ahead.
Mr. Gonzalez, I checked earlier this week, an email addressed us. Could you explain to the public, it's very important. Some of these things get passed and they don't know what's going on. If there's any press there or not. Could you explain, and I, I know I asked for detail because prior to that in September of the COVID money, I know there's two parts. And I don't expect to give a long presentation. But could you split, if there's any ongoing line items that we're going to be responsible for next year of that money? Such as the $40,000 that we used for the, the, for Mr. Young's salary that we plugged into that, that's going to be an ongoing expense for us next year. A lot of the items, obviously, are not, he does a good job with that. But is there any other ones? I think there's one for computers I saw, some, not computers, but focused the internet type thing. I think that was 130,000, 139,000. But if you could address that. But if you could address that for the public so they would know, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So no problem, Mr. Leary. I will do a high level and try to be brief because this is repetitive to some. Every month I've outlined the CARES dollars that are helping our operating expenditures in three categories. They are property and liability insurance. Excuse me. I did have them memorized last week. And I don't have them color coordinated on the document that's in front of me. But later on tonight, we're going to walk into the current budget forecast and I have them. So if you don't mind, sir, can I address it specifically when we move on to that item? But I am prepared to discuss both pots of COVID money, CARES dollars. There was about 740,000 of operating dollars that were used and supported from typical general fund operating dollars that were supported by the CARES, the ESER component of the CARES Act. So if I can just also be clear, on a $40,000 pot of money that was utilized to, to cover an acting role. Those are ongoing operating costs, sir, that were going to be incurred by the school department with or without COVID monies. And I will specifically talk about both of those when I get into later on this monthly report, if that's okay.
Absolutely. Thank you.
But can I, can I just say, Ron, Mr. Gonzalez, that $795,000 that is in our current 2021 budget, it's three insurance contracts that are being covered in that. And that's it. Their insurance is my recollection. So there's no, that, that was last year that you, that Mr. Leary was talking about, an expense last year, so.
Yes, there was. I do, in the month of October, I shared out with the group the grant that was written for the CRF components. We had two pots of COVID monies. One was the ESSER and the second one was CRF, which then became the Supplemental Education Impact Aid. Same pot of money, but only two. Roughly stimulated the district with $1.6 million of federal dollars to help reduce the impact or financial constraint of COVID-19. So we used this, the ESER money was a supplement to state aid withheld in the prior year. June 30 state aid number was reduced by the ESER component. That was a decision made by the General Assembly to help balance their budget at year end. The second component, pocket of money, almost a million dollars, about 960, that was monies to help safely open schools with one-time expenses. So those aren't ongoing recurring costs. Those are one-time expenses to help stimulate the school and open safely by Plexiglas, obtain PPE equipment, obtain Boggers, cleaning equipment. We also utilized that bucket of money to, to buy some equipment, computers. We bought a van, a transit van, to help move students safely around the district and the various programs that they're in. Those are not ongoing recurring costs. I, I do have now, I scrolled down on a separate screen, my expenditure report.
We can, you can bring it up later. You can delve into that later. That's fine. We'll, we'll, we'll cover it later in your.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, that's fine.
I am sorry. I just was trying to get us back to the 2021 operating budget because that's where we were, what we're trying to approve now is the new amended 2021 operating budget, which those, some of the grant money that you're talking about is a different pots of money, right, Mr. Gonzalez? So we're just trying to add in the full $1,400,000 from the state and then have that, have our expenses then balance out for the fiscal year 2021. Those other questions are about grant money that Mr. Leary was talking about. So I just want to say what we're asking for approval of tonight is the amended 2021 operating budget with the full dollars from the state, which we had had in a little less than 100, was actually like $880,000 and now we're at $1,004,000. So it allows us to balance our budget and go forward in this fiscal year. Not with grants. That's separate. Okay?
And, and it'll all be covered in the expenditure reports later in the evening. So this is just a simple amendment of the budget to reflect the state aid as adopted.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leary?
Tell her I was born at night, but not last night. So I get that. I just want to know, before we adopt this budget, how much of this money from CARES and the ALP is going to be an ongoing expense for us covered for this year? Is the $40,000 in it? Is that $139,000 for the internet in it? I don't know. If he needs to cover that later on, that's fine. I have no problem with that.
He can cover, he can cover it later on because it's not going to change between now and, and, and hour when we're into the expenditure report.
So if, if I can just be clear, we have already approved the use of those insurance costs and we, we wrote a grant for that. We applied for a grant for some of those monies. We are not making any changes to that operating component of our pre-approved 2021 budget. Right now, the budget presented in front of you is just as Ms. Boatright has stated. We are increasing our revenue up to what we are actually going to get from the state. And we were conservative in planning prior to the budget before the one in front of you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? I don't believe I see any. So Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the amended budget as presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Thank you. Next item is 6.6. It's a request for approval of Exhibit 1, Transportation Addendum between Newport Public Schools and Ocean State Transit. Ms. Gonzalez is going to present an addendum for school transportation contract with Ocean State Transit to include audit district transportation services. Is there a motion to approve the addendum as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Mr. Gonzalez, if you'd like to give a quick, quick, brief overview and take any questions, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. About two months ago in December, we, the addendum was presented and voted approved by the school committee. What we did not have is the detail, which helps us for stability purposes going forward, as well as cost savings that have already been discussed. Now, it, it outlines a per-day cost for the bus contract. So there was no change to the original addendum. It is simply adding an exhibit for the future years to continue services with Ocean State Transportation.
Terrific. Thank you. Any questions or comments from school committee members? I'm not seeing any. So Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the addition of Exhibit 1 to the addendum as presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Alrighty. Ms. Winslow, I think. Definitely giving a thumbs up.
Very good. Thank you. Seven zero?
Okay. Those damn technology gremlins. Next item, 6.7 is Request to Award RFP Number NPS 21-011 to National Van. Mr. Gonzalez is requesting the approval to award RFP Number NPS 21-011 to National Van in the amount of $49,177.73 as presented this evening. Funds are made available through the generous donation from the Atlanta Morris McBean Trust. Is there a motion to approve the awarding of the RFP as presented this evening? I'll give that, boy, that was quick, guys. Good. I'll give the, Ms. Winslow credit for making the motion and Dr. Flowers the second. And motion's been made, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. Is there any necessary overview? I think it's all pretty clear, but anything you want to add?
No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Terrific. Any questions for Mr. Gonzalez on the RFP or the awarding? I don't see or hear any. So, Mr. Nash, would you do a roll call vote, please, to approve the RFP NPS 21-011 as presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Great. Next action item is 6.8. And that is Request for Approval of an Agreement Between Newport Public Schools and O'Day Engineers. Director Young has recommended the approval of the contract between Newport Public Schools and O'Day Engineers Inc. to review the condition of the Rogers High School Auditorium. Rogers High School is required to have a licensed engineer review the condition of the auditorium annually. This is born out of the legwork, if you will, investigation work that was done of Rogers High School in preparation of the Stage 1 and 2. And when that was done, it was highly recommended to continue on a annual basis, monitoring of the structural engineer as long as the auditorium is in use. So is there a motion to approve the agreement as presented this evening? Mr. Dring, seconded by Ms. Boatright. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Young on the agreement? Or Mr. Young, if you wanted to give a quick overview, go right ahead. Then we'll take any questions or comments that there might be.
Sure, the last evaluation was 2019. And in the evaluation, I am looking away so I can read on my other screen. But it said, "This is a potentially serious structural issue that requires further investigation." Went off of the master price agreement from the state and then contacted a number of firms to come out and make this assessment. Most of them, other folks that I talked to, had recommended O'Day Engineering as, as a starting point as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Ms. Boatright?
Just wondering what, do you know when they'll be doing it? Because we're interested in results.
Yes, so they're, they're ready for us.
Great. Good.
Any other questions or comments, concerns from the school committee? Ms. Winslow?
I'm just curious if, let's say they come back with the worst news that, you know, the auditorium, we can't use that whole building. I just wanted to know how difficult it might be or if we thought at all about, you know, Plan B for, you know, I don't, I think we can maybe more easily get, get away from using the auditorium, but the classroom space, I don't know. Band is still back there. I think I had a social studies class there one day. Like what, is it going to be possible even with COVID, you know, space requirements to, to house like all the stuff that goes on in that building?
Uh, what, one, we're going to have to if they tell us to, for one. But I, I've already been, oh, he's still on. There he is. So Jack, Mr. Vance and I have been talking about this already. So I know it's, we're preparing for it.
Mr. Gonzalez is going to have to get his eraser and pencil out if that's the case. His budget's going to become a little unbalanced. But any other questions or comments? Ms. Winslow?
I mean, I guess my, my concern is, should we just plan for that? Should we just spend the money on moving to classrooms now instead of, and call the auditorium off limits, considering we know we're moving forward with a new school building? I mean, I also, I, I get it. I, I don't want to be negligent and I don't want to ignore. Let's say, I don't know, this new school gets delayed. I mean, we have to upkeep what we have, but just curious if anyone else on the committee feels that way too.
I would suggest, I, I, I would at least suggest, in what I know from reading the reports, I would think we would anxiously await O'Day's response. And I don't believe it'll take very long. Luckily, they were the company who did the evaluation 2019. So they're familiar and the engineers coming out probably are familiar with what they saw and if it's, you know, been any more disintegration of this, of the structure. So I, I think we'll get that report, but that shouldn't take long. And I think we could go from there. I think it'll be quick enough to make that decision. Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, um, I don't want to be dense, but the, this is the auditorium roof we were talking about. We don't, are there?
It's, it's the auditorium structure as well as the roof. The roof was pointed out, but it's the structure that supports the roof and the, the spalding and the disintegration of the concrete.
But there are there, about how many classrooms would be impacted? Oh, you really don't know yet.
I believe there's six classrooms back there. Might not be that high.
Yeah.
Might be higher, but.
Well, if this is where distance learning will be.
Mr. Vance is counting. He hasn't run out of fingers yet, so he might come up with an answer.
There's, there's six classrooms. It's, our, our ALP program is housed down there. That is where our band works out of.
Yeah.
So we'll hope for the best with the report. We'll see. Hopefully, we can make it, make it a few more years, but we'll see what the report says. Any other comments, questions? Not seeing or hearing any, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the agreement as presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Great, thank you. That moves us, that concludes the action items. Gets us into the discussion items. And the first discussion item is the Attendance Participation Impact on Academic Performance. It's addresses concerns most, Ms. Winslow has asked about as far as the effects of COVID and absenteeism and learning, distance learning on the students. And I'm not quite sure, I know Ms. Winslow, Dr. Jermaine, are you? I'm not sure who is presenting the discussion.
So, thank you, Mr. Gomes. So the building principals are with us this evening and the directors as well to answer any specific questions. As we've shared and I shared in a recent update with the committee, the Hasenfeld Institute is already looking into learning loss and starting to map out specific initiatives. And there's also been a big push on tutoring. I believe maybe some of you saw that, that free tutoring is being offered to all our high school students and middle school students. Khan Academy, there's, there's quite a list of tutoring that is available for our students. But the bigger question that every district, not only in Rhode Island, but across the nation, is trying to figure out how to go forward with this new landscape that's going to be before us as we start to hopefully come out of COVID and start to, I'm going to say reimagine how we deliver educational services as well as education in general. So they're here, Ms. Winslow, committee, any questions you have? They're here to answer and maybe give a brief, maybe give a brief picture of what's going on in each of their schools related to attendance. And I don't know if you want to start with the elementary? And I don't know if you want to start with the elementary, with Ms. Westman, or, and then move up, or you want to start the high school and then go backwards?
We'll start with, let's start with Ms. West, Mrs. Westman, because Mr. Vance has been talking today, we'll give his voice a rest. Ms. Mrs. Westman, go right ahead.
All right, I'm just looking at the list of the questions that were submitted to us of the questions you had, do you have specific questions you want to ask me? Do you want me to give the answers to the questions that were asked? How did you want to do this?
I think if you start with the questions that, what you have, I think that's a good start, and probably will prompt a few other questions to come out of your answers.
All right, so one of the first questions they asked is on a range of one to five, what is the overall attendance in classes? One low, five being great. So usually for our attendance, our goal is always ninety-five percent or higher, obviously a hundred percent is, you know, what we always are shooting for. This year we noticed in both in-person and DL, we have an average of about eighty-seven percent, that's what our attendance is, so it's lower this year than it has been in past. The next question was on a range of one to five, what is the overall participation in classes? So based on teacher feedback during our personal learning communities and stuff, when the students are present, either online, well, obviously in person, when they're there, they're engaged, but when they're present online, they're very engaged. I think teachers have done a really nice job. The problem, what we're seeing sometimes with our ELL students, is that sometimes they'll get on, but they won't show their camera, or they won't speak a lot, so we're seeing, that's something different that we're seeing this year. Also, we'll have some students that check in in the morning, but then maybe won't complete assignments during the day, so that's something we're running into with the online learning. Let's see, then there was, what are some comments about screen participation and class participation? So that's some for, for in-person. Our students seem to be really engaged in our curriculum specials, like when you, when you walk into the classrooms, which I do often, all the students are engaged, teachers are teaching, I mean, the setup looks different and everything, but the same positivity is going on, the same teaching is going on, it's really a good feel, surprisingly, with all this stuff going on. Students, we as teachers, students seem to enjoy working in partnerships as much as they can, there obviously have to be social distances, they have to be masks, but we're doing everything we can. A lot of our distance learning teachers have learned how to work in breakout groups, so they can work in partners that way, as well as our in-person teachers, so they're not physically in contact. We have, all of our students are able to log in and participate in the online activities, we provided all the technology hotspots they need, so everybody has the ability to do that, and when they don't, we make sure they do. One of my assistant principals, Nicole, has done a really nice job at making sure, and then Rob Young, too, about getting hotspots to everybody, so I feel like we've done a really good job offering those, them the opportunity. In regard to distance learning, as I said before, some just log in and then they don't come back. Sometimes our ELL students don't feel comfortable getting on the screen. Um, let's see, yeah, so, and sometimes we're worried that, although we're teaching on distance learning, it's hard unless the student is in front of you to accurately assess them, so we're just trying to figure out, like, is the teaching on distance learning, we take their assessments, we do the test, but without seeing them in person, teachers feel like that's kind of a struggle. And sometimes we worry about our lack of support for students who, you know, need access to par educators or access to technology, sometimes the people that are supporting them at home don't know a lot about technology, and they're logging in, and a lot of the work relies a lot on the student. So those are some things that we noticed. Do you want me to stop there? That's what I have so far.
Would you like each level to present, and then questions follow up?
No, I think we'll question as they go along, it's gonna be easier, because I'm not smart enough to remember them until they get done talking. I think Ms. Bowlen has a question, so we'll go to Ms. Bowlen.
Okay, I gotta unmute here, hold on. Okay, I'm unmuted. So I had a question, I would assume that that eighty-seven percent attendance rate that you referred to, you've taken out all COVID-related absences?
Uh, well, that's tricky, yes, some of them are and some aren't, because when they're on COVID, we're still participating, so sometimes they're online virtual, so it's kind of a, not always, but most of the time when we, we haven't had a ton of students on quarantine, some of the things that happened were vacation, so if we can log them in, in online virtual, or do packets where they can, we mark them present, so it's kind of
I think, Ms. Winslow, did you have some questions? I saw you.
I just, this is gonna be the same question for everybody, I think, is that, what, you know, I'm gonna assume you're noticing learning loss and higher, but, lower attendance rates, so what do you want to happen next year, or, you know, when things, when we can finally implement maybe tutoring, or different classes, or teachers, or structures, or whatever it is, what, what do you want to happen? And how, what that? Yeah, that's a big question, so, you know, I think what's, like, first of what we really need to know is, we really need accurate testing, you know, and scoring to see where kids are, because we're noticing, we were just reviewing our latest STAR data today, actually, and some of the kids that tested at home surprisingly did better than when they came back into school and then took the STAR test here. So I think we really need to see an accurate, we need to know where everybody is testing-wise. A lot of the teachers are asking, especially at the kindergarten, one level, are we going to retain students? Do we do that? So these are some big discussions that we have to have, but I think the first thing we need to have is really accurate data to see where each kids are at. I mean, I, you know, right now, we're already looking at some different things and a way to present interventions, different ways. I don't know if we think about having smaller class sizes still to be able to attack, you know, having less kids with all the learning loss, maybe if we don't increase our numbers as much, but then will we have room to bring everybody back? And what is next year gonna look like? I guess that's my other question. You know, are we gonna be back in full capacity? Are we still gonna have kids on distance learning? I'm assuming we're gonna be wearing masks, so it's hard to kind of gauge with all the unknowns, that's kind of where I'm at, I don't know where the other principals are at, but.
Any, Ms. Spohrath?
Yeah, I just want to bring up, I know Middletown at one time had multi-grade situations, and it may be that something like that has to be considered for some of the kids where you, because you don't know where they fit, just throwing that out. So I think some people like that in Middletown.
I, and, you know, we had talked about that, I think, last year, like, a lot of the kindergarten teachers, because some of the times, because we don't have mandatory pre-K, some of the kids who come into kindergarten, you know, haven't had any education before they get to K, so a lot of the K teachers had asked if we could do like a, call it like a K-two, or a pre-one class, where the kids in kindergarten could go there, and then maybe even they could move forward halfway through the year to catch up, like, that was some ideas that were thrown around, too.
Any other questions right now for Mrs. Westman? Don't see any, so, Mr. Leary?
Ms. Westman, are there any new trends emerging in absenteeism? We used to get a report, I know Ms. Jermaine's talked about this numerous times, you don't get any more, so I don't know how many kids are absent. I didn't know, it's been something I've been hammering on for umpteen years, seems like a public op you don't care about, but are there any new trends you're seeing now, emerging?
Yep, and that's a good question, some of the new things, you know, it's interesting, some of the kids that, one of the questions that someone had asked is, is it the same kids that were still having attendance issues, are, you know, is that still the same kind of kids? Some of the kids are the same ones that were always truant, no matter if we were in school, in-person, distance learning, but I would say the biggest trend that I'm noticing is that kids who are in distance learning, a lot of times, they're not coming as consistently as they should, so it's kind of like you chose distance learning, so you're thinking that, the parents made a commitment to do distance learning, because that was what we agreed upon, but then they're not completing the work, they're not coming in, they're not logging in, and that's not all, it's a small number, but I'm just saying, so how do we get these kids? And then we offer to bring them back, but parents are so fearful still, even though Pell is like so safe, I mean, we're doing a really good job, the staff, everybody keeping it safe, but we just can't seem to change their mind, so where do we go with these people? That's kind of one thing that's, we're frustrated with, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and Ms. Jermaine could follow up, so I have to ask that question these three times. What, are we gonna start getting some data on absenteeism at all?
So, Mr. Leary, we do not have the Aspen reports that we used to have in the past. The, and the principals at each of their buildings are monitoring it, and as a matter of fact, in a C-tree presentation, I believe you may have received a week ago or two, I can resend it, did show some improvements at different levels for attendance. I can send that to you.
So we're seeing, we're seeing improvements in absenteeism?
Actually, Rogers was doing pre-COVID very good, they were seeing quite a bit of improvement. Tops, that's right, thank you, Principal Westman. Pell was two, Thompson was having a bit of a dip, was, which was surprising. And we do have now with our initiative, Jared Cahini is now leading that, he took over just recently, two weeks ago, and he'll be heading the initiative, working with our community partners and our building principals, but I can resend that to you and that data to you.
No, are we getting any numbers like we did with Aspen in the past?
I believe we upload every day to Ride. Ride gets our data every single day. We do not get the reports that come out of Aspen, because the reports that came out of Aspen actually weren't truly factual, because they told you the number of incidents, and they did not tell you about attendance. We do not have a substitute for that report yet. We have been trying to think of a way we can display it for you, because the, internally, each of the schools are monitoring their attendance, and they're working on it, but I understand you'd like a, some kind of document for the committee, and I'm trying, we're trying to figure something out, and instead of reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, we've been working on this for months now, I'm just disappointed, because, you know, I push this all the time, and I, and I log those numbers in and go after it, but we need to get something to see what it is.
Well, part of the reason, Mr. Leary, we don't present that to you, because the numbers you were going after me for were not actually attendance numbers, they were incidents, so we're trying to think of a report that actually reports that out to you.
Okay, so, but last April, last May, I don't know how back to last year, May, you had, we had reports of kids that were absent, that were just absent, because it was, were totally out of school learning, and distance learning, and we had numerous, I mean, it was up to thirty, thirty-eight hundred, thirty-nine hundred, at both Rogers, Pell, Little Lessard, Thompson, so they must be accurate numbers, right?
Mr. Leary, I'm gonna send you the report that C-tree has, because again, that Aspen report was giving incidents, not who was in school. I could come into the building every day, I could be marked absent, then I get marked tardy, then I have a dentist's appointment, and then I get dismissed, then I come back, and then I get in trouble and get suspended, so.
I know that, I understand that, that's why.
Okay, all right, and that was, sorry.
I hear that many, many times over, instance, but I'm saying to you, when we looked at last April, last May numbers, we, when everybody was on distance learning, we had, you know, almost four thousand kids out in a month, you know, obviously kids, I can't go back to last year.
I can't, so I'm gonna say, I don't know that report, I'm gonna have to say, I would need the document.
Okay, we'll get that information to everybody.
Yeah, I'll follow you.
So, Mrs. Westman, are you, I don't think there's any other questions, I'm not seeing any, are you?
I just have a quick question, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead, Mr. Dring.
Yeah, Mrs. Westman, how many, how many kids at Pell are on distance learning?
So we just brought.
As a percent?
But I would say, so we're, but was close to three hundred, so I'd say we're still about two fifty right now. We've brought as many kids as we can back, we're bringing back a special ed classroom after the break, and then we're kind of maxed out in our numbers, so I would say about two fifty still.
Yeah, okay, thanks. And I just want to say, too, that my two daughters had a great experience at Pell.
Thanks, thank you. Good to hear in these times.
Any other questions for Mrs. Westman before we move on to Dr. Bean? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Westman, for your being with us and your information. Oh, Dr. Jermaine?
Yes, I just wanted to bring to your attention Mr. Prin, Assistant Principal V., Mr. V. Buckarott is here, he may have to use the chat, because he's having technical difficulty.
Wonderful. Lot of that technical gremlin stuff tonight, I don't know what's going on. So, Dr. Bean, are we gonna start with you, and, or? No? Dr. Bean having trouble as well?
I, I don't know if she's, no, she's unmute.
Unmute.
No, she doesn't look to be acknowledging it at all, maybe? Thumbs up? No? I don't think, I don't think she knows what we're looking for. And I see.
This is Mr. V. I would have just allowed in, this is very strange, the whole meeting, I was not able to do anything, and all of a sudden, right as you, as Colleen, Dr. Byrne said my name, I was given other access, so.
Well, that's awesome, just in time, so go right ahead, because Dr. Bean's having some kind of technical difficulty, so you take right over if you want to give us a little, do you have the question, do you have the questions handy there that Mrs. Westman answered?
I believe the question is, how is attendance at school, generally?
We could, you could start there, it was generally a discussion, she had six or seven questions that she gave answers to, but we'll start with that and see, see what's up. So go ahead, and you can talk about attendance, and we'll see where this school committee goes from there.
Okay, well, it may be easy for me to answer their direct questions, but I would just say that it is COVID, and we have done a pretty good job, I think, dealing with attendance so far as to date, I think, in the last couple of weeks, our numbers have improved in terms of kids attending, but we do struggle, it is a hard time, and I don't think we should shy away from that, or be afraid to say it, that our, our kids, we've dealt with a lot of hotspot issues, and Rob Young has been very helpful in helping me get hotspots for our kids, and make sure that they have access at home, but in general, we do not have the attendance that we would hope for.
So, Mr. V., Assistant Principal V., on a scale of one to five, where do you think your attendance would be, if you had to do that?
At a three.
At a three, okay, and I believe Dr. Bean was trying to come in on audio. All right, so you're at a three. As far as participation, whether they're in school or not, I'm trying to repeat back Principal Westman's question, what she was answering, on a scale of one to five, where do you think Thompson is?
I'd say again, a three.
At a three, okay, all right.
Colleen, do you need me to read the questions?
That would be, that would be great, you want to start with the next question for him? Thank you.
It says, um, let's see, comments about on-screen participation and in-class participation, so are there things you notice about your in-person learning students, and are there things that you notice about your distance learning students?
For sure, we have a lot of kids who prefer in-person learning. Our, our school, our kids love it, our teachers love it, everyone would prefer in-person, and when they are in-person, they are much more engaged. It is something that we are very happy to at this point, after we've reached the semester point, we've been reaching out to many more families, and have been adding more kids to our in-person daily attendance, and that's been really helpful for them.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I got in order, for them and everyone else. In terms of the distance learning, I think what we're finding is the fact that kids are trying to understand their role in that, it's an undefined moment for them, and it's an undefined moment for us. They prefer to be with their cameras off, and that's been a hard, hard for everyone to understand, is how do you engage? is how do you engage in a classroom if you're not physically present? And if you're not visually present? So, I know that's kind of interesting to hear because I know I'm not visually present myself right now. But that means a lot. It means a lot to the, to the community and I think that classroom community. And I, oh, I have my video started. I'm just, it doesn't work. I'm sorry, host. I just got asked to start my video. That's why I said that. Our, our virtual kids, like, so we did a great thing in Thompson where we were able to take our kids who are fully distance learning and put them in their own section. And that section has created a great community, and they've done a great job of connecting. But when I think about your question, the long term and the overall term, as those, we have lots of kids who are in that A and B group, that hybrid group, and they really struggle to connect over the video on those days they're not there. And I think that's something that, from what I can tell, talking to my peers in Rhode Island and talking to my peers over the country, is something that is just really difficult for youth to understand and for youth to connect to. So, without that, like, connection, we do struggle. And it's, I don't want to, I don't want to mince words about it. You know, we do, we do really good with the kids who come in, and we're very thankful for the opportunity right now to bring them in. For those kids who cannot, we're trying our best.
Yeah, and can you hear me? You know, isn't it comical, like, you're on the meeting at like, two minutes before five, and then it's your turn to talk and, and stuff happens. Anyways. Um, yeah, so I apologize. I logged out and logged back in when I was having difficulty. So, Nick probably already reviewed this. Where, one of the things I can't say enough for our three community partners, Boys and Girls Club, our Newport Community School, and a combination of Fab Newport and MLK, because we just opened our third pod to support our children that Nick just mentioned, that, you know, really struggle on those days that they're home, because a lot of them are home by themselves. And so, as a middle school student, you know, that's a lot of choice. Being home and making the decision, you know, are you going to go to class? Or are you going to watch a video game or whatever? So, having those community partners to provide guidance and a safe space and some incentives and, you know, building relationships with the kids is really, is great. So, right now, we have 11, 11 students at MLK, approximately about 20 students at the Boys and Girls Club, and our new pod through the Newport Community School down at the Siemens Institute. That group is a focus of five and six, and so there's 10 fifth graders and 10 sixth graders. And again, they're going on their opposite days that they're not in person. We probably brought back about 55 students for four days a week. Some of our students that need the most intensive support. And we only had 11 children whose families wanted them to come back at the semester point that were on that original survey. Out of 51 children, only 11 wanted to come back at the semester point. We're, we're probably about 180 students that are still on full DL. Over the past two weeks, Nick and Jared Cahini and I have noticed that our attendance actually has improved. And one of the things I was pointing out, particularly with our eighth graders, is there's been a lot of activity with our transition with course selection. So, we've definitely seen an increase in attendance with our eighth graders. But overall, our, our attendance the last couple of weeks have improved from about 86% attendance rate to about 93% attendance rate the past two weeks. So, you know, we know midterms went out. We know the end of this week, our second quarter report cards go out. There's been an increase in parent requests for meetings. So, you know, there is, there's a lot of positives that have been going on. We're, we're just having to share out with our clusters on common assessments where every content level is providing students with a variety of choice on how to present their assessment when it comes time to, you know, the culminating activity. So, you know, teachers are working their tails off to try to increase our participation. But same thing that Tracy mentioned, that, you know, we still have students that come in in the morning, so they don't get that morning call. So, they, they sign into homeroom, but then they pick and choose which classes they're going to. And so, teachers are doing class attendance so that we can paint an accurate picture for families around, you know, what does the school day really look like for your child when you're not getting that call from Jared in the morning? But yet, the teachers are saying, hey, they're never showing up for my class. So, by doing the class attendance, that helps us to paint, you know, a more accurate picture. And the students know that we're doing that now, and so that, that seems to have a little bit of an impact, but, you know, not a complete impact.
Are we, if, any question? I don't know if that got through the basic questions or not. Any questions or comments for, from the school committee for Dr. Bean or Mr. Baccarat? Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
I'm going to repeat my question earlier. I don't know if it's also a question of like, data and assessing where the kids are at right now, but what are you envisioning now for your needs? Or, I'm going to say next year. I'm going to cross my fingers it's next year. But you had a magic wand and could give the kids everything you want, what would it be?
A lot more teachers.
The, one of the things that we're going to start to do, we just kind of broached the subject with the staff because, you know, they're asking the same question. You know, what, what are we going to do about the skill gap that, that we're seeing with students? And so, at our next, next faculty meeting, we're going to be doing a brainstorming session and breakout sessions, probably using Achieve the Core, has a great doc, by grade level on those key skills that students need to have secured before they move to the next grade. So, we'll probably be using that documentation on, you know, K through 12. So, I'll put my assistant suitcase on. Using that doc would be really helpful in terms of, you know, using the data that we currently have. Tracy mentioned, you know, our data, our data in whole is not super valid. Neither will the state testing be based on the fact that, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have kids that aren't going to come into our schools to take that state testing. We're experiencing that right now, trying to do the access testing. But anyways, you know, we've got a tremendous amount of data that we can use to triangulate and look at the, those specific skills that we need kids to have secured in order to go to the next grade. That's going to give us a good indication on, you know, what are, what are those actual numbers that we're talking about, which will then help us to design programs for kids, whether, you know, we start it in the summer and then bring it into the schools in the fall. But, you know, it, it's a discussion, you know, it's a discussion worldwide. It's not something that we're going to solve in one year. I, I mean, it's, it's going to be just like anything, a business. Everybody that's impacted by what we're experiencing, it's, it's going to, it's going to have an impact for quite a few years for our kids. So...
And just to add to that, I would say, I think everything that we need right now is about differentiation. So, I think from, I don't want to speak for Ms. Westman, but I would say for elementary and middle schools right now, what we need is help with someone who can support differentiation and working inside that classroom and giving that support, be able to teach to those different levels that we're going to get next because we know we're going to get them. We know we're going to have kids at very high, middle, and low levels, and we're going to need some support for our teachers to be able to do that within side of the classroom. We, we know that we don't have the funding and we don't have the ability to create new classrooms, and we don't have the ability to create new teachers. But we do have the ability to figure out, how can we help differentiate inside that classroom? And I think that would really help us out based on what Dr. Bean was just saying.
Ms. Bowlin, I think, has some questions. So, go right ahead, Ms. Bowlin. You're muted. Famous words tonight. You're muted.
So, I mean, in that last document we read and that was provided for us, it talked about focusing on math and reading. So, you know, if that's coming from the state, you know, maybe we don't focus on science and social studies at the elementary or the middle school level and really focus on getting these kids caught up with just math and reading. And that's, you know, my two cents put in there.
Yeah, but I mean, at the middle level, you have to have relevance for kids. You, you can't just have math and reading. You have to make it relatable for, for those kids. So, you know, everybody's a reading teacher, whether you're teaching science or social studies. Everybody's a math teacher. I mean, they, so there's, there's got to, the content's got to be relevant for our kids in order for them to connect to it too. So, but, but I, I hear you that the, the skills, like, right, right now, we were talking today that one of the common assessments is a persuasive essay that they're going to do in social studies about, you know, what region of the world would you want to live in? You know, in math, they're, they're going to do an advertisement on a, on a she shed in a, in a man cave using volume and density and measurement. But, but they're going to, you know, sell their product. So, I mean, so there's writing and math, and there's research and social studies. I, I wouldn't say we do away with science and social studies, especially with what, what our kids just shared with us from the high school.
Right, okay.
Dr. Flowers?
Thank you. You're talking about even having people volunteering to go in. Perhaps, once the vaccine is more readily available and people will feel safer, you know, going into any place, schools or whatever, you might be able to draw more people in. Even with the mentoring programs, it seems that a lot of this has gone by the wayside and hopefully temporarily. But if we can get folks to have specific expertise in, you know, like you say, reading in the content area, working on math, or making things relevant, as Dr. Bean said, which is very, it's important in all the grades. But I think especially when you get to the middle grades, you know, that some of us would be a little more amenable to the idea of going into a group that's not our pod, our own personal pod, and, and working with young people. And it calls, calls for commitment too. That's another thing, but it's an idea. And also, I was wondering that, you know, with two schools so far, when there have been instances of students having to quarantine because of either being, you know, exposed to the virus or, or having it. I, I think I understood that some can still be in the distance learning as they are in the quarantine. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
They are, yeah, yeah. And, and I, I've said this several times, and I have to say it again. I bow down in, in, in respect to the teachers who work with the kids online and at the same time in the classroom. I have a small group of kids at St. Joe's CCD. It's a challenge. It really is. And, and they're from two different schools too, two different communities. And sometimes you get the look, you know, and just keeping things under control and trying to get things done in a certain amount of time. So, I can't say enough about what our teachers are doing. And, and you have people nationally saying, we have to get all the kids back in. Well, then we also have to keep them safe. And that goes for the teachers and, and parents and administrators too. So, it's a real, you talk about having all the balls in the air. You're really doing, I think, a good job keeping the balancing act here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flowers.
I think that that may wrap us up for the Thompson report from Dr. Bean and Mr. Baccarat. So, thank you, and I will move up to Mr. Vance and Mr. Monahan.
Yeah, so we're, we're having some of the very same struggles as the, as the other two levels. You know, you were asking similar questions, so I'm just going to kind of hit the data early. So, we have 650 kids total at the high school, 235 are full remote, 362 are our hybrid students, where they come in Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, Friday. And we have 54 kids that are coming in four days a week. We're trying to increase that number because we want to make sure that our seniors are in a good place before they, you know, hit that graduation stage. You know, so we're looking at those kiddos with our, on top of our special ed and our ELL kids that need a little bit more support to try and bring them in. On a daily basis, our daily attendance ranges from 86 to 92% in attendance. You know, so that's kids that are either in the building or virtually present. And we, we have a system for capturing that because we use the, the period by period attendance so that if, if at the first go-around, something is missed, Wendy, out of the attendance office, fires an email with the initial attendance, the midday attendance, and the end-of-day attendance. So, there's, there's a reminder for people to go back and double-check their rosters and make sure that they've got accurate attendance of kids that were virtually present or present in front of them in the classroom. So, it's, it's a continual update. You know, so if you're going to put on that, that five-point scale, we're probably like a three or four when it comes to kids that are, that are attending and that kids that are engaging in the learning. You know, we, we, we did a survey similar where we asked about engagement, you know, for our remote kids versus our in-person students. And, you know, the kids that are in-person, the engagement is, is, is high. It's typically four or five. The remote kids, it's more like that three or four. Because to what Ms. Bean talked about, there are definitely distractions for kids when they're home, and they may not be on the screen all the time. And so, we, we have some kids that check in in the morning and then don't turn their camera on for the day. So, it's really hard to see what they're doing and how they're engaging. But our, you know, our folks are, are working hard to try and connect with those students that are home, making phone calls, trying to have parent conferences on the PD day. Our ninth-grade academy set up parent conferences throughout the day, and they, they captured probably a good, you know, 30 or 40 parents to have conversations about the children and how they're doing. And attendance was definitely one of the, a part of that conversation. And then, so when Ms. Winslow asks, like, what, what do we, what would we like to do? Or what do we need? I'd like to get back to some vertical articulation where the three buildings are talking about what's happening at each level, you know, to, to what Kim said earlier. This is going to be, the effects of this pandemic and the quarantine and this situation are going to be long-lasting, and it's not going to be fixed in a year or two years. We're going to have kiddos that are going to travel from Pell through Thompson into the high school that are going to continue to have those gaps, that are going to need significant intervention. And so, that, that vertical articulation, being able to have conversations with Pell and Thompson for what they're putting in place and how they're identifying kids will help us when they land in the high school as well. You know, so it's really starting more around getting everybody on the same page for how we're supporting these kids as they travel through, you know, the Newport schools.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Winslow, you want to ask your question?
He just answered. I actually, could I just make a comment that I, I'm grateful for the information you guys shared, the candidness, and, and thank you. I know this took a long time to discuss, and it's not always fun to say, yeah, we're struggling with attendance or participation, or it might be, but everybody is... everybody is. And so I just want us to all acknowledge it and get out ahead of it. Try, if I can support you in, um, in helping work towards a long-term solution, you know, I want to. So thank you again for, for sharing this information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the school committee before we move ahead a little? Nope. Well, thank you all. Thanks for your time, patience, uh, working through all the quirks. So thank you all to, uh, for being here. All good information. Dr. Jermaine, are you waving goodbye or do you want to say something?
No, it's not that time yet, but I did want to say, I am waving at the, at the principals. I know they, I just want to say the staff has been amazing. Principals, vice principals, administrators. And I want to thank you for being here tonight and taking the time to share with the committee. As I've discussed and we've all discussed, it's really important. They want to hear you're the boots on the ground. You're there with the students and you're the experts. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Yes, thank you all for being here. Thanks.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, uh, next brief update is going to be from the 7.2. It's the School Building Committee. And Ms. Boatright and Mrs. Bowlin, I'm not sure who's gonna.
Well, I, I think I'll start, but we're going to make it really quick because I know we've probably already exceeded the length of a legitimate school committee meeting. So we, we gave you a letter that we, what?
Not yet. We got, we got 20 minutes. Go right ahead.
Oh, we do? Okay. So, uh, we, we sent in a letter to the editor, which we hope to do at least once a month. And just to update the community, uh, one of the more exciting things we have going right now is our communications uh, group is going to meet for the first time this next Wednesday. And we have some people from the city and, and, uh, some people that have a reputation for being really good at social media on that group. And we're looking for more volunteers who want to serve because we'd like to put together a really good web website where you can go to find all the latest information. We also gave all of you a timeline and there's a lot going on this month. We have, uh, all three of the, um, design, build, the, uh, construction for Rogers out and we have, uh, also the architect out, um, RFPs and RFQs out right now. So you can see that by that timeline, and this is open to anybody on the public can go see this on board docs right now. And the timeline stays fluid because sometimes things have to change. I will say that, you know, we're trying to keep, hold everybody to it so that, you know, we get this project done and on time. One of the questions we wanted to ask tonight was, um, that the design build per, uh, group will be finished and ready for a recommendation on Thursday, the 20, uh, the 20, let me just look at it here. Monday, the 22nd.
SBC. That one is going to the SBC.
On Monday, the 22nd. So the question tonight is, um, we would like to be able to, and we'll get you the backup as soon as possible. But what we would like to do after that evening is if possible, have a special meeting on Thursday, the 25th. We do not want to rush anybody on the school committee, but, um, it will help us to keep this project moving and on time rather than waiting for the next regular school committee meeting, which is the 8th of March. So, uh, you know, that would give everybody there a couple of days. And, and remember, you really don't have you know, we've invested and, and put our trust into the school building committee to make these decisions for us. You know, and it's just, you know, uh, kind of more of a, you know, letting everybody on the school committee know what's going on. And, uh, but that you do, we do need the vote from the school committee. So I, how did people feel about that 25th date? And only having that information for two days? Without voting on it tonight, would you rather it wait until that school committee meeting or are you okay with the 25th on that?
So, I'm a little confused.
Sorry, we had put forth not waiting to the next school committee meeting, but waiting to the following Tuesday, which would give people like eight or nine days to look at information. But it's really going to be now that everybody's gone through the process one time and understands that the school building committee group and the working group will have done all the RFPs and rated and scored and then done all the interviews and rated and scored. You'll be getting that information, but we're not going to be redoing interviews and so on. So it's, it's really an inform and, um, unless something really jumps out. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay, so I actually was going to say I had taken a look at that calendar and it's fantastic. And I thank you so much for doing that because it actually, I, I already put, you know, on my calendar, oh, I'm going to be busy with school committee work, this reading stuff this weekend. So, you know, if you're telling me in advance, I need to block some time between the 22nd and the 25th to read those, the backup that you give me. I'm, I'm good with that. That works. Thank you. If that's what you're saying and.
That's good. That's what we're hoping. Yeah.
Just as long as, I know it might not always be possible, right, to, to squeeze something in, but, um, having that calendar there and, and helping us understand when you're going to need our, our, uh, support, um, you know, to, to review things, that, that's fine with me. I understand things are on a tight deadline with this project.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Okay, is that it? Is that it ladies?
Is everybody comfortable with that 25th having just those three days? Maybe we could have more people speak to that. Sandra, Jim, Dr. Mr.
Well, let's, let's leave it like we've talked about. If the information comes out and they have the information.
Yeah, we can hold the date, but.
We'll hold it, but they need information as we've discussed. They need information and the effort's going to be made to get them the information. So we can hold the date, that's for sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the School Building Committee co-chairs?
No, we, um.
The, the only other one is actually the third did go out. The construction manager at risk did also go out for, so all three RFPs are out and they will all be due back. So that's great.
Alrighty, great. So we're going to move on to wrap up the meeting here before eight o'clock. So that is, uh, uh, discussion items. Next is the consent agenda, 8.1 approval of minutes, 8.2 request for approval of invoices and requisitions, and 8.3 request for approval of home instructions. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dr. Flowers, seconded by, uh, Ms. Bowlin. Any, uh, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? I am not seeing or hearing any. So Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll vote, roll call vote to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. 7-0?
Fantastic. Uh, the next item is, uh, that leads us into correspondence. We have several correspondence when my computer, my mouse is connecting up. There it goes. Monthly correspondence. Uh, we have, uh, a couple of meeting notes there that there is a, something's wrong up there. Let me go to this. That there's a finance, finance subcommittee, but all those dates have passed by, I believe. So.
It's just me, minute, minute, meeting minutes.
Oh, in the correspondence. Okay, meeting minutes. Gotcha. I thought it was, uh, yep, gotcha. So that's the meeting minutes of the finance subcommittee. And we have a correspondence from the, um, McClary White Charitable Foundation. $16,000 donation from the White family for Pell School. Uh, the White family has been very generous, uh, to our schools in the last couple of years. So thank you to them. Once again, for their donations and support of the Pell School, Pell Elementary School. Uh, that is it on monthly correspondence. Is there a motion to accept the correspondence as presented? Ms. Boatright, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion or comments on the correspondence? Hearing or seeing none, Ms. Ms. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to accept the correspondence?
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
7-0. Thank you.
Great. Uh, okay. So now we have 7:49 is the time with 11 minutes remaining for our three hour time limit. Uh, we have our reports from the superintendent and staff. So I'm going to ask for a motion. I normally do this at the end just to allow for as much time as possible. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve them as, uh, the reports as presented, and then we'll have discussion on it, but just a little housekeeping for us. So a motion by Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Winslow. So, um, Mr. Gonzalez is always up first with 10.1 and 10.2. And I don't, oh, there he is. Okay. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, go right ahead. Thought we might have lost you. No, technical world tonight.
Now, uh, I have identified, I have been identifying some of the helping grants that we've been receiving all year. It is, I, they are identified in the purple highlight and we have, uh, this is just touching on previous questions from Mr. Leary on the COVID dollars. But I do have them listed here every single month. The CARES dollars that are helping or operating on budget. That is, the work is compensation insurance. I could not think of that name earlier. The property and liability insurance as well as our IT infrastructure support and security contract. Okay, those are helpers this year from COVID. Aside from that, the expenditure report is still, uh, we're still in great shape. And as accurately stated in the memo, I believe we are in a good position, have adequate revenue for, to, to support all of the expenses. Are there any particular questions?
Okay. Doesn't look like any. Hold on, Mr. Leary, hold on one minute. Ms. Boatright, go right ahead.
Yeah, then the next time you need to expand the field of your last column in the full year estimate because I got a lot of, um, symbols. But other than that, it's looking good.
When I opened up that, I identified it. So I, I can actually read out loud what that number should be. Okay.
What's the bottom, bottom number?
I apologize. I did not notice that. When we hear and review the doc, we do it, I guess, in a bad way. We look at it in the Excel application, not in the PDF one. So, for the, the first one, the local appropriation, that number didn't, does not change from the adopted budget. It'll, you know, that's the number the city is going to give us. The next number that is truncated incorrectly is our state aid number. This should accurately read $13,971,093. That comes directly from governors recommended in April 2020. Um, and then a grand total of, uh, anticipated forecast revenue of $44,126,283. So I apologize about that. I'm corrected.
It was just that bottom line number I needed, but thank you. I can resend out the PDF corrected, oh, expanded. Thank you. Yes, of course. All right.
Mr. Leary, did you have some questions?
Just if you would very briefly say, do we have any ongoing expenses from that COVID money?
COVID money was used to support ESAR money was implemented as a, a supplement. The ESAR component of the COVID money, COVID monies were used as a supplement to state aid that was reduced in the prior year. Is that clear to you, Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Okay. So with, with that being said, we, we did use some of our ongoing operating costs as I, as I started out with, um, workers' compensation, property and liability insurance, as well as our IT and security support. COVID monies are helping us in that, uh, in, in those expenditures this fiscal year.
What is the total of that money?
Approximately $747,000.
So that's it ongoing expense we need to deal with for 2022 budget?
Yes. And if we didn't have the COVID monies, you know, perhaps we'd be in, um, a, a more constrained position.
But I'm going to state that is in our budget and the others are because we do have people in our staff and administrative positions that are doing two jobs or three jobs. So there's two, two issues. One is the one-time funds from the federal government. And then the second is the staff that we have, um, got doing multiple jobs. So those are two issues. Just wanted to state that. Mr. Gonzalez, you're on mute again.
I apologize. Was there a question?
No, it looked like you were talking.
So as Ms. Bowlin always uses the term, I use the term ongoing expenses. She uses structural deficit. So is there a $747,000 structural deficit created from those pots of money?
I don't agree with that statement at all.
Well, then please explain. Thank you.
Caught me off guard there. Not ready to unmute. Any other questions, comments from Mr. Gonzalez before we move along to? No? Okay. Thank you. I assume there's 10.2. There's nothing earth shattering to discuss there. Any questions or comments? Going to move into 10.3 enrollment demographics and, uh, enrollment demographic and homeless reports. Any questions or comments there? Okay, liking it. 10.4, facility update. We're going to make Mr. Young come on one more time only because he hung out all night with us. Right to the end.
Right to the end.
If you want to give a brief, brief update and take any questions?
Not much, not much this month. Back to kind of steady state operations. I did send a list of kind of what we purchased. So some just janitorial supplies, some paint supplies. Did some repair on our, uh, on our snow, snow clearing, uh, tools and such, uh, but not, not, not too much, um, to report tonight.
Steady state? That sounds like a military word.
One of my hats, one of my other hats.
Any questions for Mr. Young on the facilities report? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Let's see. Uh, whoops, I just X'd out of my board docs, but, somebody help, uh, I can go to my agenda. So six, 10.5, distance learning, in-person learning. I think we had a good, good recap of that from the, uh, right from the, uh, another military word, Colleen's famous boots on the ground. So our boots on the ground gave us a good recap of that and the issues we're facing. 10.6 is district goals, 2021, 20, 2020, 2021. Questions, comments, concerns? Superintendent's update, partnerships, collabora, collaborations and personnel. Any comments, questions? Mr. Leary?
Oh, um, very quick, I don't have a lot of time. Um, Mr. Galvin gave me two responses. One of them is the response, I'll leave it after this. That's a contractual tan agreement that we have to approve. So going forward, if there's more than five, it's already six here tonight. So we definitely have more than that. We have to approve them as a school committee.
I'm not sure I understand the question, but if, if you could ask it.
So the question was that. So the question was that, right now, it just comes in in the update on appointments on the leave of absence, retirements, things like that, and the TAN contract says there's five leave of absences, they can do it automatically, have to add it up to the school committee, everyone, whether they want to do it or not. So going forward...
I'm gonna, I'll get you offline and we will get you here into, I believe the five that you're talking to are year, full-year leave of absence, not the leave of absence.
It doesn't state in the contract, so it can be anyone.
Okay, so I'll get you the answer to that, I will.
Neil already gave us the answer.
Okay, well, we'll get it addressed. I don't, so are you asking to vote on the five leave of absence tonight?
Not tonight, it has to be presented as an action item to us.
All right, we'll get you some clarity on that, and I apologize, I did see your emails late today and I didn't even get to look at them, but...
I'll need clarification because I don't have five LOAs to present.
There's five here tonight.
Tonight?
I...
There's grade three, teacher Rogers, teacher at Pell, teacher at Thompson, Tony Alford, down, teacher at Pell, there's six tonight.
Those are retirements, aren't they?
No, it says leave of absence, retirement's below that, five retirements.
I've lost my board doc, so...
I was gonna say, mine's only going down to, oh, leave of absence.
I see eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you. Now I know where you're speaking to.
But...
That's a decision we have to make going forward.
I'm going to just state this, looking at it very quickly. Anything that is a leave of absence, or it's not technically, it could be FMLA, that is a federal requirement that must be followed by law. And so I'm just looking at it very quickly, but I'll just share that. So I think, Mr. Leary, you may want clarification from Attorney Galvin about any FMLAs.
He already gave you the...
I will, it came in late today, I will talk to all the parties involved, all the clarification we need, trust me. So that concludes the superintendent reports and staff. Motion's remained seconded, so Ms. Nash will do a roll call vote to accept the reports as presented.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, and I have accidentally, with my mouse problems, I'm having technical difficulty, and I've X-ed out of my suggested meeting dates and agenda times, but all of those will be published when this goes live tomorrow, so they all become public knowledge tomorrow when this, after the meeting. And that moves us at this time, it's 8:02, and a motion to adjourn would be in order. Mr. Dring, and seconded by Ms. Winslow. And we'll do a simple voice vote for that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Eyes have it, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all, and have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.